The time is 7:09 PM. It is Tuesday, September 1st, and I'm going to call this regularly scheduled city council meeting to order. Would all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag
of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, would the City Secretary please call the roll?
Mitchell.
Here.
Coach.
Here.
Ellison.
President.
Sheil.
Here.
Rizzo.
Present.
Vialobos.
Present.
Tobias.
Here.
All right, seven members present. We have a quorum. Next up, approval of the minutes.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the city council special meeting minutes from August 17th. The city council special meeting from August 17th, okay, so the 5:30 and the 7 o'clock special meeting minutes, the city council special meeting minutes from August 18th, and the city council meeting minutes from August the 18th.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilor Sheil, seconded by Councilor Rizzo. Is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries seven to zero. Next up, citizen comments period. I believe we have no one registered to speak. Can I get a confirmation of that, please?
That's correct.
Okay, if there are no objections, I'm going to close citizen comments period. It's now closed. Next up, appointments. Consider appointment of Tim Sanford, Division Manager of Treatment Operations, to replace Brian Lillbridge of, on the Alliance Regional Water Authority Board of Directors.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the appointment of Tim Sanford to the Iowa Water Board.
I'll second that. It's been motioned in and seconded. As we know, we're losing Brian. He's moving on to greener pastures, and so Tim is going to be a great resource there on that board. It's very technical, and I know Tim will do a good job. Any, any further discussions?
Yes, Mayor, first of all, I would like to say welcome to Tim, and yes, we are going to miss Brian. He has been a very helpful member of the, of the board.
I second that. Appreciate Brian's service to our city for a long time. He's one of those guys you don't really see all that often, but he brings a lot to the table, and he's definitely worked tirelessly for our city, and kudos to him, and wish him all the best.
Anything else? All right, all those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries seven to zero. Next up, presentation, proclamation honoring the 100th anniversary of the adoption of the 19th Amendment of the United States Constitution. Councilor Sheil.
All right, city council proclamation. Whereas prior to the ratification of the 19th Amendment allowing women the right to vote in the United States of America, women could not own property. They had no legal claim to their money, the money they earned, and no female could vote in any federal election. In 1848, the Seneca, excuse me, whereas in 1848, the Seneca Falls Convention was formed by Elizabeth Cady Stanton and Lucretia Mott. They would be joined by Susan B. Anthony. Whereas in 1869, the Wyoming Territory granted women the right to vote, and when Wyoming was admitted to the United States as a state, they remained. Whereas in 1878, Congress formed committees to study and debate the issue, to which it took over four decades for the measure to go before the states for ratification. Whereas in 1869, the National Women Suffrage Association and women, and American Women's Suffrage Association, sorry, were formed, and in 1890, they merged to form the National American Women's Suffrage Association, to which Carrie Chapman Cat would step up and lead in 1900. Whereas between 1910 and 1918, 17 states and territories would extend the right to vote to women, and in 1916, the first female was voted to the United States Congress, Jeanette Rankin from Wyoming. Whereas on June 28, 1919, Texas was the third state to ratify the 19th Amendment, and on August 18, 1920, Tennessee was the 36th state to ratify the 19th Amendment, to which the requirement of passage by three-fourths of all states was fulfilled. And whereas on August 26, 1920, the 19th Amendment was certified, and women were granted the right to vote in all 48 states. However, despite its passage, due to poll taxes, local laws, and other restrictions, women of color and other minorities were banned the right to register to vote until the passage of the Voting Rights Act in 1965. Whereas there had been 366 women voted into the United States Congress, 10 of which have served from Texas, including Lara Thomas, who succeeded her husband, and Barbara Jordan, the first black woman to be voted into Congress from Texas. Therefore, we get proclaimed by the city council of Kyle, Texas, that Wednesday, the 26th day of August 2020 should also be recognized as the 100th anniversary of the passage of the 19th Amendment, in recognition of the heroic women and their actions that allowed the women of today and the future to have the right to have a say in their local, county, state, and federal political agendas. It is hereby officially found and determined that the, at the meeting to which this resolution was passed, was open to the public as required by the Open Meetings Act, Chapter 551 Local Government Code, and that public notice of the time, place, and purpose of said meeting was given as required by said act. This resolution will take effect from and after the date of its passage as authorized by the Charter of the City of Kyle, Texas, signed and entered into this day, first day of September 2020. And I would just like to point out to everybody that October 5th is the last day that, or yes, the last day that you can register to vote in person, and all, they all, if you're doing it by mail, must be postmarked, and wouldn't it be a kicker that all 24,000 registered voters in Kyle actually voted? So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Sheil. Any other thoughts?
I, I just want to say, thank Councilmember Sheil for bringing this forward. I know we, we kind of forgot about this last week, and I'm glad we brought this forward. This is a very important day for women. I'm, I just learned a little bit of history, thanks to Councilmember Sheil, about Wyoming, and it's a great history, because I love being in Wyoming. I'm glad that Wyoming took that initiative to allow women to vote, and as, as I've been a part of the city of Kyle as a council member, but even before that, as, as just someone running for office, I've had the pleasure of meeting many of the women who have run for off, different offices throughout the county and the state, and it, I'm really excited to see their energy and everything they bring to the offices they're seeking, or the offices they hold. It's really amazing to get to know these, these women and speak to them, and, and the, I mean, I can't go on about how intelligent they are, and how hardworking they are, their passion. It's been a great process of being an elected official to get to meet these women that represent many of our citizens, and, you know, we can't be remiss to forget those that opened the doors for a lot of these women, like just here in our home is Mary Kyle, being the first mayor, woman mayor elected to Kyle, Paula Alvarez, first female Hispanic woman to be elected to city council, Sandra Tonorio, the first female elected Hispanic mayor to the city council, and, and now our own Tracy Shield here, also representing the citizens. I just want to thank them all for their dedication and all they've done.
This is Councilmember Vialobos, and you know, a lot of people say we, we forgot. I present in a couple of different meetings later on that, you know, that day, and it was, it was, it was very well, warm and welcoming that a lot of what I would present on was the idea of who taught me what voting was before I really knew what it was about, and I can, I have strong memories of my grandmother's walking, you know, a couple of miles to the polling station, and me toting in hand, and, you know, at the time, you know, my mother was working and father was working, and it was time to vote, so they pulled me along, and we stayed, we stayed sometimes hours waiting to vote. I didn't know any better at the time, but I think over a period of time, when you see that type of, of commitment, and you hear the stories that they share with you as a young child and growing in, you understand the strength, and you understand the importance of being able to voice, to voice your, 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 your vote, or to voice your, your idea of what government should be about through your vote, and, and should represent those things. But what an honor for us to share this important day here today. Thank you, Councilmember Sheil, for, for bringing it forward, and I continue to appreciate and admire all of my mentors, some of the strongest and continue to be mentors are very strong and successful women, and I appreciate every single one of them that have paved the way and provided the opportunities for me to be here today. I can't say thank you enough, and I'll, I'll never forget that period, because it's been ingrained in me from a lot of strong mentors, such as my grandmothers and my mom and aunts, all of my aunts that, that always told me that this was important, and this is the reasons why you, 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 you go out and vote, and you are part of the political process, is because to create the narrative, you have to be part of that narrative, and you have to write that narrative, and this is, these are the opportunities that you, that you have being in these positions. Thank you very much. I'm honored to have shared this moment with you, Councilmember Sheil, and thank you for, for, for all of those who've gone before us today. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I want to also thank Councilmember Sheil for bringing this proclamation forward. I think, for me, it, it definitely speaks, obviously to pay homage to a historical significance of this, but the right to vote was not guaranteed to everyone, and it took time for various portions of our population to get that right to vote, and others to get out of the way, because they were very capable people that could have been in positions to influence our nation if it wasn't for others suppressing the vote and suppressing people from being, having access to things. And so it's important for us to continue to remember that, remember that importance of, of voting and participating in, in elections, both not only federal, state, but especially local elections, and, you know, I too have had my fair share of influence from people of all different backgrounds and cultures, and I think that's what makes our country great, is when we do get inclusion of people of all different backgrounds, cultures, races, sex, included on the things that we do. And so, thank you again, Councilmember Sheil, for doing this, and I think the, the council for the support with that as well.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, we're going to move to the next item. Agenda item number eight, presentation by Bowie Company regarding Public Safety Center Bond. Adam is listed under Councilman Ellison.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So, I'd like to, before I present Bowie, I just wanted to give a little, once again, background. The council knows how much I love to do that. We started this process a little over two years ago, and really looking to address the long-term issues with our police facility in earnest, and we did a needs assessment, the company we hired in the fall of 2018. They worked with our PD department for the good part of a year to better understand the needs, long-term needs of our police facility and police services, public safety services. And we came really close to addressing that last fall, but we decided to, to take another, slow it down even more, and, and, and look towards this year, and, and get a number of different items in a row throughout this year. One of the things we wanted to do is, because we know the importance of education and member, and members of our community understanding what they are going to the ballot for, we decided to unanimously, as a council, to hire a public relations firm to help us with the educational piece of this bond, and the task force combed through a number of different applicants, and we decided on Bowie and Company, based on their, their great presentations they did over two interviews, their enthusiasm for working with the city of Kyle, and, and what I heard numerous times throughout those interviews as being a partner with the city of Kyle, and Bowie has been just that since we've brought them on, and now that we have voted to put the bond on the ballot, we have a number of different initiatives coming forward, for the informational campaign. And without further ado, I'd like to introduce, I believe we have Mr. Jed Bowie and Ms. Patty Hickson.
Perfect. Councilmember, thank you so much. Can everybody hear me okay? I'm still new to some of this technology. Councilmember Ellison, thank you very much for that introduction. Mayor Mitchell, Mayor Pro Tim Coach, Councilmember, City Manager Sellers, we could not be happier to be in the trenches with you, and so we've broken our brief presentation tonight into a couple of different sections. One, background, kind of what we've been up to to date, what we've heard as part of our listening tour with the community, the educational materials that we've developed to kind of lean into the next phase, which is outreach. Our goal from the beginning, and what you have charged us with, is to ensure that every citizen in Kyle has educational materials that help them make an informed decision in November, since y'all have called the election. And so I wanted to give you a brief kind of update on what we've been up to. Patty and I are both happy to answer any questions at the end or during the presentation, so please, we can make this as conversational as you would like to, or we can hold those to the end, but I'm going to give you a synopsis of kind of what we've been up to to get us to this date, and then Patty's going to talk about where we're going forward. And so, as, as Councilmember Ellison said, you know, our firm was brought on in May to begin preparing for a potential public education campaign around a bond for a public education, or a public safety center. So over the last three months, our team has melt, has met multiple times with the Bond Task Force, the police chief, other police officers, other folks in the community, and other city staff to better understand the services that are provided, the needs that are not being met, and where the, where the gap is. After reviewing the needs assessment for the police department, which was developed by Brinkley Sargent Architects both in 2011 and 2019, that's kind of what set our baseline in terms of education materials and where we kind of started at. We also met with PGAL and Bartlett Cock, the GC, to understand the design that the Bond Task Force had researched and developed for the Public Safety Center, and the timeline that associated with Proposition A if it passed. In July, our team met with a number of community stakeholders identified by the city and others as folks that we would like to kind of better inform issues, concerns, other kinds of things that we needed to identify during the public education campaign to better inform our educational materials. And so we spent a lot of time with community members understanding better about their understanding of the police department, the role they play, the needs that are not being met, those types of things, and what they want from the city in terms of public safety, what their reactions would be to a potential bond, and, and the tax impact that could come along with that, as well as best ways to educate broader community. And so we've, we've taken that all under consideration, and, and have presented that with working closely with city staff in terms of how we roll that forward. Especially now that the bond election has been called by the city council, we want to emphasize that our role is public education. Again, we want to ensure that everybody has every bit of detail that they need, their questions are answered through website, through email, however it comes in, that they get the information they need to make an informed decision. Our role is to ensure that nobody goes to the poll without knowing everything that's on the ballot and what they need to know to make that good decision. And so, thank you for charging with us with that. I mean, we're incredibly grateful for that opportunity, and that's the role that we want to play. And so, we have been developing materials that Patty will go over shortly. We are working to set up open houses, all sorts of different types of engagement to honor your request that the citizens have every means possible to engage in this process, and that all of their questions are answered. And so, thank you, and with that, I will turn it over to Patty to kind of talk a little bit more tactically in terms of, of how we go forward from here.
Hi, thank you, Jed. Well, thank you, Mayor and the city council. As Jed mentioned, we have held multiple meetings with the Bond Task Force as well as the city, and in our meetings, we've heard that it's important to have an accurate timeline and project cost for this bond based on the lessons that the city learned through the 2013 Road Bond Program. As a result, the city researched designs of similar facilities in other Texas municipalities, and ultimately found an existing design from the architecture firm PGAL that could be customized for Kyle, providing an accurate cost estimate for the Public Safety Center that's been proposed, and informing the potential construction timeline. The Bowie and Company team met with PGAL and Bartlett Cock General Contractors to understand that proposed timeline for the Public Safety Center, and what that was informed that construction could begin in spring 2021 and be completed in approximately 14 months if Proposition A passes in November. In our meetings with community leaders, which included the business, cultural, education, faith, and senior communities, we heard that the primary concern about the city calling for a bond this November was the timing with COVID and the financial impact to the community. And this informed the city's decision to defer the tax rate of the proposed Public Safety Center until October 2021. We also heard in several of our interviews with community leaders that they believe the current police department facilities are inadequate, and that the department is understaffed for Kyle's growing population. We also heard that these leaders would want a facility that truly serves the community. The fact that the city would be able to establish an emergency operations center to respond to natural disasters, community-wide safety threats, and even pandemics like COVID-19 was well-received. Similarly, we heard in these interviews that it was important for the facility to be able to provide dedicated space to expand community-based programs like Citizens on Patrol, as well as mental health services, which the proposed Public Safety Center would include. Finally, we asked these community leaders that we spoke to about how to share information with Kyle residents about a bond, and ensure that everyone in the community would be informed before Election Day. We heard the following channels would be most important. Virtual open houses, or in-person events if possible, the city's website, social media, especially Facebook, and the city's weekly utility newsletter. We also heard suggestions for ads in the Hays Free Press and Community Impact, and text alerts were also suggested, although the city reserves that method of communication for emergencies only. So, based on the input that we gathered from community leaders and the Bond Task Force, our team has already developed a library of materials, as Jed referenced, to educate Kyle residents about Proposition A ahead of Election Day on November 3rd. We've developed a logo for Proposition A to build recognition and awareness among community members, as well as a bond website that can be found at cityofkyle.com/bond, with all of the details for the proposed Public Safety Center. We've also developed a fact sheet and a set of frequently asked questions for Proposition A, and we've set up a dedicated email account and phone hotline where community members can reach out to learn more about the bond, and also request a presentation for their neighborhood or civic groups. We've also created business cards for the police department and city staff, so that they can give out those cards to any community members who might ask about Proposition A, and those direct those community members to the bond website where they can learn more. All of the above materials that we've just referenced include general election information, such as Election Day and early voting dates, polling locations and hours, and registration details and deadlines. And all of our materials are available in both English and Spanish, which is another point of emphasis that we heard in our interviews with community leaders. We've worked closely with the city's legal team to review all of the materials that we've developed, and we know that the legal team has provided the city with guidance on focusing on education, not advocacy for this bond election. Finally, we've worked with the city on a press release to announce the bond election for the Public Safety Center once it was called, and the city's communications team shared that with media on August 18th, which has already resulted in press coverage to help educate the community members about Proposition A. So, what comes next? We've been coordinating with city staff and the Bond Task Force to schedule a series of five virtual open houses. The schedule has just been finalized, and these open houses will be held every Thursday evening from September 17th through October 15th. The virtual format will hopefully allow every resident to attend at least one of those events, but a recording of the presentation will also be available after the first open house, so that anyone can watch it as their schedules allow. And if circumstances improve with COVID-19, we may host the last two open houses on October 8th and October 15th in person, as come-and-go events with social distancing and other health precautions in place, again, if things allow. We plan to have Spanish interpretation, as well as closed captioning, available to ensure that our open houses are accessible for the community, and more information about these open houses will be available on the bond website and on the city's Facebook page. In addition to the materials that are already available, we are in the process of creating a video about Proposition A that will be shared at our open houses and via the city's communication channels for coming weeks. We are also working on signage that will go up around the city, that will direct residents to the bond webpage for more information, and we will be distributing a direct mailer to every Kyle resident later this month, with details on the proposed Public Safety Center, as well as election dates. We're also working with the city's communications team to use the city's social media channels, as well as that weekly newsletter, utility newsletter, to share information about the proposed bond for the Public Safety Center. As we wrap up our presentation this evening, we want to emphasize that our team is open to feedback, and we are listening, and we're ready to adapt and adjust our process and our efforts based on what residents need to know about Proposition A before Election Day. That completes the update that we've prepared, but we want to ensure that we've answered all of your questions, so please let us know if there's anything else that we can provide. Thank you.
Council and city manager, I think, as Patty indicated, we, we want to make sure you walk away from tonight knowing that every resource is in place, or that you have everything that you need as you have conversations, city manager, sellers, anything that we can do that we've not accounted for, we would love to have that discussion, but just want y'all to be completely armed with public education materials and have everything you need in terms of your conversations day to day. So, again, thank you so much for letting us be a part of this. This is really kind of where the rubber meets the road, and we want to make sure that you've got everything you need.
Thank you, Mr. Bowie and Ms. Hickson. Mayor, did you want to take it back over here?
Sure. Does anybody have any questions or comments for the Bowie team?
Sure. Does anybody have any questions or comments for the Bowie team?
I think they, Mayor, I think they pointed out the, the, the concern of all of ours through their presentation, the timing. The educational pieces, the information that's going to be accessible to our citizens. And I think it's, it's critical that we, we were sensitive to those particular issues coming into planning for this and that. We made very clear that these were the types of approaches and these were the types of information that we wanted to have to our citizens. And I think it's important that, you know, as we bring this forward to the citizens to make a decision on, on behalf of the city for this particular facility. Is that we make every effort to communicate, to provide materials both that they can see digitally and, and in hand should they request that and should they need it. And I know a lot of this documentation and. A lot of this information flowers are going to be coming out. So this is a, a very important step in educating and, and. The process, educating about the facility and educating about the services that we're, we're attempting to bring to the citizens. And in a time where we know we're concerned about with regards to COVID, but although in a time where we can. Really take advantage of some of the cost factors for this as well. So. We've heard what the citizens wanted since before COVID on a facility like this and, and they're more highlighted to this point that, you know, we ensure that all of the pieces that go out. For people to understand and look at, look at it from a very. Educated perspective when, when they, when they go to the polls and vote. So I appreciate that and I appreciate the support of the council for taking those steps and taking a direction to make sure that we're all very well informed.
Thank you.
Mayor, may I respond to that with, with your permission?
Sure, of course.
Councilmember Villalobos, I think you are, this is Jed, I think you are spot on. And, and what I would. Counsel this council on in terms of where we are is. In your conversations, especially within light of everything that is going on globally and, and what we're dealing with is to really focus on the need. And to really focus on the problem that you are working to address. I think people can come up with a million reasons to not support things if they don't understand the problem you're trying to solve. And so as you are in your day-to-day conversations to all council, my best advice is, is to really talk about the problem you are trying to solve. I think that keeps you on incredibly safe ground in terms of advocacy. And I think it is a good reminder for your population in terms of what you are trying to do and, and making tough but necessary decisions. And I think you are on really good footing there. And so I know you guys know that, but just as a reminder, I, I think. The best value you have is turned in terms of focusing on the, the issue, the community issue you're trying to address.
Absolutely. Thank you very much.
Other thoughts?
So I, I concur with that. I'll jump in. Certainly appreciate the, the work that Bowie has done since getting on board. And this is something we've talked about for a number of months. There's a reason why we always allude to 2011 and 2018 because this has been a discussion and. Taken a lot of time to even get to where we are now and looking at various different aspects of this, trying to cut as many time or trying to measure as many times before we cut. We certainly were about to cut last year and put it on the bond, but. You know, we felt we needed to take some additional steps. And I think those additional steps. Have helped us get to where we are now. And, and I can completely concur with you, Mr. Bowie, that it is about addressing a need, a need that has really exacerbated over the. 20 years that our city has completely blown up in population. Unfortunately. COVID-19 did drop a bomb on us in, in March that we weren't expecting. But there's a lot of information that I would encourage everyone to, to look into the backup material on this. To understand how that, that tip tax impacted can be, will be deferred on this. But also just kind of understanding the timeline and, and why we are here and why now, really, because that's the biggest question I, I get asked. And so I certainly appreciate the materials that we'll have at our disposal to help educate and inform. Our fellow residents so that when they go to the, the polls in November. Our goal is that every one of our residents will have heard about this and know about it. Whether they vote yes or no, they will know about it and they will know quite a bit of information about it, hopefully. So that, that is the goal here. I also appreciate. You know, one of the things we looked at is obviously the, the impact that these bonds can have. I know I was talking to Mr. Sellers and Purves put together a calculator to help residents kind of understand the impact personally for themselves and their family as well. So I certainly appreciate staff putting that together and us incorporating that into the materials. But that's, that's what I have to say about it. Certainly just want people to be informed about it and know as much as they can. In order to make an informed decision in November. Thank you all.
Thank you, Councilmember.
This is Councilmember Rizzo. Councilor Ellison made a point about this being a, in a year in the making. One reason that it's taken this long is that we wanted to make sure that we did our due diligence when looking at all our options. And I, I can promise you that we, as a council, worked really hard to bring the best idea forward to the public, the best solution for our police department. But I also want to really focus on what this is, a public safety center. This is definitely for the public. And a well-informed public is, is going to be key to November. Whether they, as Councilmember Ellison, whether they vote yes or no. We want to put out as much information out there, accurate information, so they, the public can make an accurate, a good. Decision, whether informed decision, I'm sorry, a good informed decision when it comes to the polls. There's, we need to be able to bring out enough information that they, they can assess whether this is a need or not a need. And, and be able to vote on it with all the information in front of them prior to voting. And that's one of the things that hiring Bowie was, was key to make sure that we got that public information out there, the messaging, so that the voter would be well-informed. And I, I, I want to thank all the committee members in the council for all their work in the past year. And it, it was, it was a lot of work, a lot of time. And we've, we've, all the citizens that were involved as well. On the committee and staff as well. They, they did a great job and I believe we've brought a really good. Plan forward when it comes to Proposition A. And I hope that the public will come out and get informed, come to the information meetings and also go online and read about it. And that's all I have today.
Thank you, Councilmember. Any other questions or comments?
Mayor, I would just like to say, I would like to recognize your staff, Jerry, Samantha, Purves, everybody that we've worked with has been incredibly responsive and has, we, we just appreciate that so much. And so. They have multiple duties, but I, I just did not want that to get lost in everything that we're doing. They have been awesome and responsive and timely and a pleasure to work with. So thank you so much for that opportunity.
Thank you, Jed.
Thank you.
All right, no objections. I'm going to move on. Next up, agenda item number nine, update on various capital improvement projects, road projects, building programs and/or general operational activities where no action is required. Mr. Sellers.
Mayor and Council Scott Sellers for the record. Good evening, everyone. I'm going to share my screen. Okay, sorry about that. All right, we've got several items on the City Manager Report this evening. The first being our annual neighborhood cleanup is scheduled for September 19th, September 19th. At Greg Clark Park from 8 to 11:30. So I believe there are quite a few citizens that have taken advantage of this in the past, but for those who haven't, if this is new. We do accept quite a few large bulky items as well as some typical household hazardous waste. So you can see in the, the list here of accepted items. If you have any of these laying around your home and would like to get rid of this, this is a great opportunity at, at basically no cost to you. It's a service of, of the city and please bring your utility bill and your ID to show that you're a resident of Kyle will be happy to, to help remove that unwanted junk off of your hands. The next item, we have our Labor Day celebrations coming right up. You can find more information, cityofkyle.com/LaborDay. A lot of information here on this, this slide, but September 5th, that is this upcoming Saturday. So for the public. Please come out and, and enjoy the festivities this Saturday morning at 7 o'clock AM. In years past, for Pie in the Sky, I know we've had quite a good turnout and this year we'd love to see everyone come out and. Watch those hot air balloons that will be launching from different locations throughout the city. Just look up in the sky and cheer on our pilots. Later that evening, you'll have a chance to, to actually come and see the balloons up close and personal from the safety of your vehicle. So this year, due to COVID-19, we actually have a drive-through glow show. That is at 7:45 PM. It is located at 5001 City Lights Drive, just behind the Target and Kohl Center. So on the south side there. And on again, that website, you'll see a map of how the vehicles will be funneled through that area. We'll have message boards set up on our state highways and we'll have our, our police department and other staff directing traffic. But we should have a good number of pilots and balloons that are there and hopefully if the weather cooperates, we'll, we'll have some, some inflated balloons and give a great show for the, the community. And then during this season of Labor Day celebrations, Pie in the Sky celebrations, we have a photo contest that was opened from September 4th through the 11th. And we are asking the community to capture what Labor Day in Kyle means to you. So could be anything up to your creativity, but go ahead and send us those photos at contest@cityofkyle.com during the, this 4th through the 11th. And we will, we will be judging those. So I hope to see a lot of submissions as well. So this, this should be great. In, in light of our needing to pull things back a little bit due to.
Scott, can I just add a couple of things?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. First of all, just to let everybody know, we are going to have two specialty balloons this year. We're going to have Mr. Biddle, who is going to be a very tall bear, standing bear. And he's gonna, he's gonna be very cute and very good, nice to see. And then we also have Armodillo, who is an armadillo-shaped balloon. And they will both be doing tethers in the morning and then of course be a part of our balloon glow. And then most definitely. I wanted to thank Councilmember Rizzo, Councilmember Ellison and Councilmember Villalobos for offering to help judge the photo contest. So thank you.
And Councilmember Sheel, where will those two balloons be tethered?
They will be tethered at the, the 5001. City Lights Drive area.
Very good. Thank you very much. So this is great. And again, more information can be found online, cityofkyle.com/LaborDay. And finally, wanted to give an update on our Kyle Mass Food Distribution Events. As you know, we've, we've done four of these events now. And these have been very successful. You can see in our partnership with Central Texas Food Bank, we have served over 23,000 individuals, which is just amazing. And during this time, kudos to the city council. The Central Texas Food Bank and all of our volunteers who have participated to make these events just amazing. You'll see through those graphs there, the, the number of households. And new households and new individuals per event. So we've, we've definitely had a very large reach. And we are in the process of planning our next event. The, the location is being finalized as we speak, so just stay tuned to know exactly where that's going to be. We'll, we'll be sure to get the word out. But again, a great job to, to the community and everyone that, that put this together. It's really inspiring. And with that, that concludes my report. I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Scott, this is Councilmember Rizzo. Hey, just wanted to make sure that I'm still included on that email chain on the food bank because I haven't received anything. Also, I'd like to see what I was going to get with Jeff Gonzalez from the food bank and see if there's something we can do for Thanksgiving and Christmas. Seeing that we're still not clear from the effects of COVID-19, like to be able to do something for the families in as well. So as a council, I'd like us to reach out and, and see what we can do. For Thanksgiving and Christmas time.
Yes, sir. We'll have those conversations.
Thank you, Scott. Anyone else? All right, next up, agenda item number 10, CIP Road Projects and Consent Agenda Presentation. Mr. Barba.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Leon Barba, City Engineer. I'm working with my new computer, so hopefully we can keep this going well. Anyway, let me start off with the Lehman Road. Based on our current pay estimates, we're at 91% complete. The contractor's working on some preliminary walkthrough items that we gave them recently. We do have our final walkthrough scheduled for September 10th with Public Works and other city staff. We typically do an ADA inspection as quickly as we can. This is as soon as we could do it. So, but we need to do an ADA inspection to make sure that it does meet ADA and is in compliance with the ADA requirements. Next project is Burleson. Currently it's at 83% complete. As you well know, they're working on the concrete work there between Rodriguez to the roundabout. There's, they're also working on some of the preliminary punch, walkthrough punch list that we created. We did finish all the illumination and traffic signal foundation work, so that's done. We're hoping and, and expecting that it should be open by September 14th. From what I understand, the paving crews are supposed to be there September 10th. We need to do the striping specifically because of the railroad crossing. We need to make sure that striping is in place before we open up the road. South Side Wastewater Project, we've increased our percentage of completion. We're at 61%. We still have a crew trying to complete the lift station. Second crew is still working near Public Works. We're about to wrap that work up there. We do have the third crew working at the board there at Post Road. They have completed the first board. Those boards were around 450 feet long. And they're working on the second board going under I-35 there at Post Road. The Treatment Plant Expansion Project, we haven't gotten an estimate up until recently, so we're still processing that last pay estimate, but, so we're using the same percentage of completion on that. But. Yesterday, they poured 256 yards, 3 o'clock in the morning. And of course, we did notify the neighborhood to let them know it was going to be done. So they weren't surprised with the work, the amount of work that was being done. This next picture, just, we threw that in there just so you can kind of see the, the scope of what's being done out there. It's, it's a very significant project that's being done out there and, and the contractor's moving very, very well. The, fortunately, we haven't had a lot of rain, so he's been able to do all the underground work. And, and keep moving pretty quickly on the project. Just wanted to tell you about some upcoming projects that we have right around the corner. We have the Button Creek Interceptor. It's a phase two portion of it. That was designed in-house and we're having a bid opening on that for September 23rd. We're estimating the cost at around $3.1 million. Colours Crossing Will Site that we, we've put out to bid. It's, we're expecting the bid opening to be on September 23rd and estimated cost for that's around $350,000. And then Windy Hill Street and Drainage Improvements, that's designed by a consultant again, LJ. A bid opening scheduled for September 28th. We hope to start construction in January and the expected completion date on that is November of 2021. And that concludes my presentation. If you have any questions for me.
Leon, this is Councilmember Rizzo. I just want to thank you for keeping us informed on all the projects, especially Burleson. I was out there last week. You and I had a conversation and noticed by your slides today that a lot of the pictures that I took are now completed. They still had forms on a lot of that, but it looks like it's completed. The intersection right there at that new, just near the the train tracks wasn't that far along. So it's great to see that already poured and almost ready for pavement. So I'm really excited about the September fourteenth opening and just just continue to expect the same quality of work that this contractor is bringing, making sure it's it's top quality for citizens. And and to have this done by September fourteenth, I know would really help out everyone in those neighborhoods. And and I think they'll probably celebrate a little bit. So thank you for being on top of this, Leon. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilmember. We will be celebrating when it's done.
Any other questions for Leon on any of the road projects that were presented or any of the items on the consent agenda? Thank you, Leon.
You're welcome.
All right, next up, the consent agenda.
Mayor, I'd like to have some questions on agenda item number twelve.
Okay. Any other items, motions?
Mayor, I'd like to pull item number, consent, consent agenda item number eleven.
Okay. Pulling.
Mayor, I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Agenda items thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, and seventeen in the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilperson Ellison, seconded by Councilperson Rizzo that we approve consent agenda items thirteen through seventeen. Is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries seven to zero. Next up, agenda item number eleven, considering possible action regarding specific policies regarding access to wheelchair accessible vehicles related to ride share programs, including Uber Kyle three fourteen. This item is for Mr. Hendricks. Councilor Rizzo, you pulled it, so you have the floor.
Yeah, my my question for Jerry. Jerry, just looking at this item, I want to see how we came up to have the number of three dollars and fourteen cents for a one-way trip. And what would be the cost for the city, which is a ten dollars? Where would that start?
Councilmember, for the record, Jerry Hendricks, Chief of Staff. Answer your question as you presented it. The three dollars and fourteen cents is a tribute to our City of Kyle branding for the pie capital of Texas. And it's pie, not only the pie that you eat, but the pie that you calculate. So so that's how we get three dollars and fourteen cents. And that is the amount the the rider will pay to begin the ride. And after that, the city pays for the next ten dollars. And in the event of a wheelchair accessible ride, any additional fees that it takes to acquire the wheelchair accessible vehicle for that rider is also covered by the city. So the the total that a rider will have available to them is thirteen dollars and fourteen cents. And then anything over that, that will also come back to the rider. So did that answer your questions?
Yes, it did. I just wanted to inform the public so they know what what percentage was theirs and what percentage the city was picking up for the ride. And I want to pre, I want to thank you for all your hard work, bringing this contract forward, bringing this entity forward to us to help with some of our transportation difficulties for those that are not able to own a car or or drive. And I think this is going to be a good resource for the city, for a lot of our citizens. So I know you've put a lot of time and a lot of hard work into this, Jerry. So I just wanted to say thank you and and thank you for all you've done during this project. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilmember. And it's been a team effort. We've had a lot of people involved on this, council members and staff members as well. So I hope to be able to bring it to the community here in very short order.
Thank you, Jerry.
I make a motion to approve agenda item eleven.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Moved by Councilperson Ellison, seconded by Councilperson Villa Lobos. All those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries seven to zero. Next up, agenda item number twelve, approve a resolution adopting the Six Creeks Public Improvement District twenty twenty annual service plan update. This is for Mr. Snyder, but I believe Mr. Villa Lobos pulled it.
But I have a couple of questions. I think number one is how come we didn't add section two to the improvement plan? And then on on the other, the other question I had was very specific to the quarterly report. There's a quarterly report that's dated the thirty-first, and I know we're in July already. So I wanted to know why are we behind on the reports? Or is that just an error?
Mayor and Council, this is Page Signs for the record. I'm going to do my best to answer. John Snyder is the one from P three works is the one who usually presents these items. He he made a presentation to council on these items, I guess, a couple of months ago. But we need to have formal adoption of the annual service and assessment plan update prior to the county issuing the the tax bills because they they include the assessment in the tax bills. So they need to have the final annual installment numbers for this year's assessments. So that's why it's back in front of you for action. With respect to why the with respect to why why an additional area was not added, I can, I'm sorry, I cannot answer that question. But we can consult with John and get you an answer outside of the meeting. Provide you that information unless there's somebody else who's available who can answer that question, who's on staff. Okay, hearing none then on the the other question had to do with a quarterly report. Is that referenced in, is that a certain page number that you're looking at that references a quarterly report?
Well, there's a, there's a quarterly report already added, but it's a, it's it's a March. It's the first quarter. And we're already, we're already into July or past July at this point. We should have, we should have a third quarterly report, shouldn't we? And that that's all. That's just something that I saw on the backup material.
Yeah.
Is there any, is there any reason why we wouldn't want to just wait until the next meeting to vote on the item? Since these questions are being brought up at the meeting?
The only reason that I could say, and and John had a another meeting tonight, which is why he's not here. The only reason is if there's a timeliness issue with allowing the information to be given to the county so that they can prepare the billing, that's the only thing that would hold.
Why don't, why don't we try to get ahold of John? Keep this item open for now. And then when he gets a chance to come into the meeting, he can come in and answer those questions.
Will do. Thank you.
Is that okay with everyone?
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. All right, next up, we're going to just leave that item pending for now. Next up, agenda item number eighteen, consider authorizing the city's director of finance to initiate process, prepare documents, accept and select bids from underwriters, seek credit rating, and coordinate all matters necessary to refund four point six million dollars in outstanding bonds in order to achieve approximately three hundred and sixty thousand dollars in estimated interest cost savings for the city of Kyle. Mr. Mahit.
Mayor, Mayor Protem, council members. For the record, I'm Perez Mahit, City's Director of Finance. Under this agenda item, staff is seeking city council's authorization to refund approximately four point six million in outstanding bonds. This city council action will authorize city staff to work with the city's financial advisor and the city's bond council to specifically prepare bond prospectus and other documents to issue the refunding bonds, request attorney general's review and approval, solicit bids and select a bond underwriter and a trustee for the refunding transaction to obtain credit rating from Standard and Poor's Global Rating Agency, publish required notices, incur necessary costs, and coordinate all appropriate steps in order to refund approximately four point six million in outstanding bonds. Staff is planning to refund portions of three different bond series, which will include the following: four hundred and eighty-five thousand from series two thousand nine general obligation bonds, two million seven hundred and seventy thousand from series twenty-ten certificates of obligation bonds, and one million three hundred and thirty-five thousand from series twenty-eleven general obligation bonds. The coupon rates on the bonds we are refunding range anywhere from three percent to four point one two five percent. The all in, all in true interest cost on the new bonds is estimated to be below two percent. By taking advantage of the city's strong financial position, city's excellent credit rating, and the current interest rates, we estimate that the city will save approximately three hundred and sixty thousand in interest costs over the remaining life of the bonds. These are preliminary estimates, final numbers for the bond amount. And actual interest cost savings will depend on the bond market conditions at the time of pricing and sale of the bonds. Our tentative schedule is to come back before city council on September fifteenth for the approval of the bond ordinance, bond pricing, and other documents for the actual issuance and sale of the refunding bonds. With that, Mayor and Council, I'll be glad to answer any questions y'all may have regarding this bond refunding item.
Thank you, Perez. Councilor Sheel.
First of all, thank you, Perez. It's always just, it's amazing to me how you're able to always find some savings on these bonds later on. And so as a council member and as a city resident, I very much appreciate your hard work in finding these savings. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Any other thoughts or questions, comments? It is good. The bond market is strong.
Yes, sir. It'd be good timing for us to refund.
So Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to authorize the Director of Finance to initiate process, prepare documents, and accept and select bids for for underwriters to help us get a better credit rating and get or get some savings on these bonds.
Sorry, I got the, was that all in the form of a motion?
Yes, that was, yes, I motioned that. Yes. I guess you didn't hear the I motioned to first.
I guess maybe we were just confused if there was added language to the the agenda item, but I'll second that.
The the motion is to approve.
Correct.
Okay. It's been moved by Councilwoman Sheel, seconded by Councilperson Ellison that we approve the agenda item refunding four point six million in bonds. Is there any further discussion on the motion? How did this, how did this come about? Where did it, where did it come from, Perez? Is this from Chris watching the markets? Or is this, are other cities doing this at the, at this time? Or also, how did the four point six come from? Where did that come from?
Each city is unique in terms of their refunding requirements. These are, we we continuously monitor our outstanding bonds and figure out which ones are callable. And only callable bonds can be refunded, and they have to make sense in terms of present value savings. So based on our research between the city staff and the city's financial advisors, we were able to identify these three bond series. And from within those three bond series, we were able to select certain maturities that were callable. And they added up to four point six million dollars. We're continuously, Mayor, we're continuously looking at bond refunding opportunities, especially during these market conditions.
Out of the three hundred and sixty thousand that we're going to save in interest, how much is it going to cost us in total to do the, to to do the refinance?
Even with the cost of refinancing, this is the net savings that we will realize. The bond transaction cost, the offering statement cost, all of those, net of those, will be three hundred and sixty thousand dollars.
Okay. Any other questions? All those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries seven to zero. I believe we have Mr. Snyder back or here now to speak. So if there are no objections, I'm going to bring item number eleven or item number twelve back up. Approve a resolution adopting the Six Creeks Public Improvements District twenty twenty annual service plan update. John, if you're here, Mr. Villa Lobos had some questions for you.
Yes, sir. Number one was, well, yeah, section number two was not added to the service plan. And then I know that on the backup material, you had a quarterly report that was submitted in March. And we're already into July. I know we've got a couple of quarterly reports already passed. So, yeah, so these SAP updates, if you remember, we came before council, I believe it was about a month ago. And so the, it was posted for presentation only, which is why, which is why we brought them back and put them on consent because we needed to actually get them formally approved. So I'd be, I'd be happy that I can, I can send you the latest quarterly report. But the, at the time that we drafted the SAP, the the March was the latest quarterly report we had available.
Thank you, sir. And then was there a reason why we didn't add section two to the plan?
Yeah, so we're actually in the process of doing that right now. We just distributed a draft SAP with improvement area two. And also considering the issuance of the phase one B bonds and the current schedule, I believe, would have us coming before council with those in late October to early November.
Thank you, Mr. Snyder.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to approve agenda item number twelve.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilperson Villa Lobos, seconded by Councilmember Tobias. That we approve agenda item number twelve. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries seven to zero. Thank you, John. Thanks for jumping on.
Not a problem. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right, next up, agenda item number nineteen, an amendment to consider a possible action on an amendment to the meet and confer agreement between the city of Kyle and Kyle Law Enforcement Association to adopt physical fitness standards in accordance with the conditional approval of the agreement. Mr. Earp.
Mayor and Council, for the record, James Earp, Assistant City Manager. The document that was attached to the agenda is the outcome of the of the work of the Appointed Negotiation Committee, which comprised of half of the, half of the folks on that were representing the city. The other half were representing the association. We were tasked with this back in December and asked to bring back this item as a part of the approval of the meet and confer agreement that went in. this item as a part of the approval of the meet and confer agreement that went into effect this fiscal year. And our original intent was to get this done in the, in the middle of the summer. We got sidetracked by a couple of different things. COVID, not the only thing, but also there was a passion amongst the folks that were on this committee to see us delivering, you know, meaningful ways to measure fitness. And those conversations happened and strung out for quite a bit. Ultimately, we circled back around to looking at adopting the Texas Department of Public Safety's physical fitness requirements, primarily because it's already been tested, it's already been perfected in court, it's, it's, it's been vetted and adopted. So, the, this is a good way for us to go ahead and enact some physical fitness requirements and to, you know, start working toward a goal. The, the vision has always been that any physical fitness item would be phased in over time. And the, this particular draft looks at doing the same thing. So, there are three years in a contract term and there are two years that will be remaining in this contract term. So, this being adopted now would go into effect and that would give an effect two years for our, our officers, our sworn personnel who are licensed through TECOL to begin to perform these, these physical fitness. And the DPS test is essentially a row machine test. It's a cardiovascular test. So, that gives a two-year window to begin to phase in the exercise and to begin to benchmark and to begin to teach and to give opportunities for our officers to, to exercise before the next round of contract would come up. And in that contract, the intent is there would be the phase two of this program, which would then get to incentives and consequences to, to failing or passing the physical fitness. So, those are yet to be negotiated within the next contract. The language that you see here was drafted by the association and then modified with some comments. It will be, if, if the council endorses this program as, as adopted, it will be inserted into the current meet and confer agreement, given the appropriate paragraph numbers and headings and whatnot that are basically Scrivener-type items. There's one typo I saw that would be fixed, but generally speaking, what this, what this does is it lays out that there will be a program, that the program will be based off of the DPS rowing benchmark, that the, that the, the department will provide instructors who will work with the sworn officers to benchmark them and to teach them and train them on proper form and then work with them to help improve their, their scores to the minimum DPS standards. We did tie the standards to the DPS rules at this point in time, primarily that way if, if DPS rules change, then we don't have to go and reopen an agreement to change the numbers. So, we're just benchmarking directly with what DPS is currently using internally. At the end of this agreement, there's also the opportunity for folks that might be affected by medical reasons or other reasons that would be suitable to need to have temporary relief from this. So, we did consider that. And then, lastly, there's desire by the association for the city to provide not only the instructors, so training some of our folks to be instructors, but also for us to provide a facility where this exercise can occur. And I, my understanding is that there is space that would be available if, in a, in a structure that, that would be built if the bond passes. In the meantime, they're asking that the, that the city find space or rent space that would allow them to have access to showers, the equipment to do their practices on, and of course, climate control, so they're not in a, in a warehouse out in the, in the heat or in the freezing. Those are their three conditions. So, this is what has come out of the, the negotiation teams and is for council to consider for acceptance. And then, if the council does accept it as drafted or requires any additional considerations, if, if the council accepts it, then the association would vote on this for ratification. And if the council rejects it, then the, the team that is negotiating on behalf of the, of the city would need to be, you know, told what those items are that, that triggered the rejection. So, we can go back to the team and work out those issues. That's all I have for now. I'd be happy to take any questions.
James, maybe this is Councilman Tobias. We have initiated this form of physical fitness test already with our department. It is a great exercise item for us because the overall objective was to provide us with better health in the long run. Okay, with the stress of the job, the, the issues with mental health with the job. This was a good way for us to be able to follow along the DPS Cooper's test in the sense, using the PRT, using the Concept 2 Rower, which I have one. It is a full-body workout and it can be monitored with an instructor as far as the technique, the speed, the heart rate and everything that goes along with it. So, I really support that and I'm glad that the cop place is really looking into that in this kind of form. I really, really support that.
It's, it's, it's a, Councilmember Vialobos. In speaking with them and negotiating that piece, it's very apparent that they utilized a lot of different assessments to kind of use one to implement a whole body workout. I think it's also important that this is, this is a program that can be met at all different phases and then improved once they start the program. I think it's also important to understand that this kind of program also will mitigate injuries versus other more, we would say they would use more physical aspects of, of, of testing. The reason why DPS went to it was to mitigate any, any, any losses with staff over a long period of time. Some of the older methods created injuries, created opportunities for injuries. They kept some of those, those sworn law enforcement officers off duty for a considerable amount of time based on those injuries. So, this is one that when you put it together, it's not only a rehab, but it also is something that will increase the O2, which is your oxygen intake based on the full-body workout because it's using all your major muscle groups to do it. It, 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 at, at a minimum level, puts them in a good wellness standard, once they are within the, their, their time slots that are created by age, weight and age and weight with regards to the VO MAX. So, it's, it's, it's really, it meets, it meets them where they're at and it provides a clear path to getting to, to the appropriate fitness. So, it's a good, it's a good way to start. It's a good way to implement a program like this with more incentives, not punitive. And it's the way that I was able to be a part of implementing in my previous department as well. Good program. And I also do have a Concept 2 at the house. And once you get into it and you, you really focus on the, the benefits of it, you're going to want one of your own and you're going to want to do it yourself too. So, there's a certain ways of creating competitions within the organization to saving your, all of your data off of those machines and, and competing not only department-wide, but you can, you can, you can compete online with other departments across the nation. And you can create certain competitions with, with regards to overall fitness on those machines. It's, it's, it's a, a lot of different opportunities, do a lot of different things with it. So, good start.
James, this is Councilmember Rizzo. Speaking about the, the fitness requirement, I guess my concern is, you know, our officers, the job can sometimes become dangerous. What do we have as far as safeguards for our officers? Say they have a critical injury and they cannot meet that requirement. Do we have allocated time for them to meet these goals? And are we going to be working with the doctors that are probably working with these officers that are hurt to give them the extra time that is needed to, to be able to achieve the fitness goals that are, are we requiring?
Well, I, I mean, I think the short answer is yes. And the longer, more drawn-out answer is, you know, each injury is unique and we already work with the doctors to facilitate, you know, return to light duty. You know, a fitness for duty test before they come back. There, this particular assessment is, is envisioned to be an annual assessment. So, it should only affect the officers who might have been injured prior to the annual assessment. And H, that is in the attachment, deals with medical exemptions and it grants temporary medical waivers, I guess, up to 90 days. And, and of course, you know, if, if there's a physical injury that requires longer than 90 days, it's not, it's not like we're going to say, well, sorry, you, you, you didn't get well enough in 90 days and now, you know, you have failed the test. So, because a lot of that has to do with coordinating with the, the medical release back, back to work and back to fitness. So, there's another component that's in there and, and I mentioned it, but it's not a part of this language. And that is the, the, the assessment. If you go out on injury, you have to go through an assessment of your physical range of motion, your, your duties before you're cleared to come back to work. So, in my estimation, if you've cleared to come back to work, then more than likely you are cleared to be able to perform this function. But on the off-chance that you can't, there is an opportunity to, to request the medical waiver.
Yeah, because some, some can return to work light duty. So, I was just making sure we had those safeguards in place and, and you know, I, I would hate to disqualify an officer, say he got hurt on the job chasing someone or in a car accident because, or in a bike accident. We've seen those before and because we've now got motorcycle patrols. So, I'd hate to, you know, hold them accountable for that and not allow them the proper time to be able to rehab and come back and, and meet those requirements. I was just making sure we had some safeguards in place. The second part of my question is, I, you kind of answered it when you started talking about the contract. I read on the bottom was about, you know, providing the showers and everything else. I was wondering how we were going to achieve that because we don't have that, we don't have room for that right now. So, I, you kind of answered it by rental space. Have we looked at some locations that might suit what the needs that we're needing just for temporary rental?
Cristiano was working on that. I did not get a report back from her. If Sandra might have received it, Sandra is on the call, maybe she can answer. But, but no, I don't have an exact number yet. I mean, I know right now, today, we have showers in public works and it's possible that we could set up some space. That's not ideally what we're looking to do. But that is a, that is a way that we could accomplish what we're looking for short-term. Because I would assume that what we're really looking to do is, is a stopgap measure before, you know, up and until there is permanent space available, whether that be at, in a new facility that PD has, has, has built, or whether that be in a, a more permanent solution that the city has come up with. So, I do know we don't have money budgeted specifically for this item in, in the current budget. So, I do know that. But that doesn't mean that I'm expecting the expense to be so severe that we can't figure out how to cover the cost or to provide some opportunity or options in the interim.
Yeah, I, I definitely, I, I'm just thinking about square footage, what we pay square footage-wise, what would take to retrofit a building to install the shower system and then to make sure the building is central air and central heat, depending how many square feet we're looking at. I, I'm trying to get a ballpark of how sizable a facility we need, but I'm, I'm thinking not too big, maybe about 2,000 square feet. Maybe under that.
I don't think you really need that much space because you're going to have, what? We have two rowers right now. So, you know, two rowers can fit in, in this room I'm sitting in and that's.
I was thinking more, more equipment as far as treadmills, things like that.
Yeah, I don't think that, I don't think that that's our intent because we're going to be testing on rowing. So, we're going to be exercising on rowing. So, and I don't know exactly how many row machines we'll end up with. The association has said that they intend to, to provide some equipment through different means that they have of support. But even if we had six or 10, you're still not in a huge footprint. So, Sandra turned on her camera. I'm not sure if that means she wants to talk or not. So, let me pause.
No, I'm with you. We don't have, we haven't located any place where we can have them put these rowers in yet with the shower.
This is Councilman Tobias again. Councilmember Rizzo.
And I, Councilmember Tobias.
I'm sorry. Real quick, you got to remember, this is going to be a once a year testing. So, we could find a facility, whether we ask a local business or a gym in town to maybe set aside some time. We can give it, let's say, two weeks that all the officers have within that timeframe to go get tested. We could do something in that sense. We'd be able to reach out in that end. So, it'll be once, once a year. And if I could just have a follow-up question, James. If this gets implemented, will this also be used during the recruiting process as far as the time? Like, there's got to be a certain time limit and with your weight and everything like that to qualify for applicants in, in the future. Is that something they're looking at as well?
No, that wasn't envisioned. That, that, this is for ongoing because there's already a fitness component, component for the new officers. It has to do with running and, and sit-ups and push-ups and all that's already been adopted for new recruits. So, this would simply be for the officers that are already employed for their ongoing fitness and health.
Thank you, sir.
So, this would require more of a permanent location for maintenance. This is not just a one-time test. This is for fitness and then testing, correct?
Yeah, I, I do think that that may have, that should be cleared up. I'm not sure if that's a mischaracterization or not, but, but I believe that we're providing the space for them to exercise throughout the year. So, they can only be tested at that one time per year, but they have the opportunity to exercise and to work on their fitness. And quite frankly, the ability to, to improve on their test scores up until that time. So, I don't think it would only need to be a, a window of two weeks. Maybe if we wanted to have a test facility somewhere, we could do that. But I do think that we need to have a place for the rowers to be available for the officers to, to access and utilize throughout the year and not just during that window of, of testing. I saw Councilmember Ellison trying to, to access or get into the conversation. Okay.
If I can add something right quick. Sandra Duran, HR Director, for the record. A lot of facilities like Goals Gym and Anytime Fitness and all the other gyms there in Kyle have given a great monthly rate for the police officers. So, they are working with our law enforcement to encourage them to go there and work out. And they also have the rowing machines there in those locations.
Yeah, but this would be paid for by the city, th- this portion. So, what you are suggesting is if we partnered with one of those existing gyms, then the expectation would be that the city would then pay for the memberships of all the officers, you know, from now on, to, to be a member of that, of that facility.
That's not what I'm saying. What I'm saying is right now, they have the capability of, you know, using their own gyms to stay fit all year around to be able to meet this annual assessment.
Well, the way that the language here is envisioned is it doesn't matter if they have a, a private way of doing it. The city needs to provide the space and the equipment for everyone equally. So, if you can go do it at your own gym too, that's great. But the, the way that this is envisioned is the city is providing the space, the city is providing the equipment and And that then in turn is allowed for them to be able to access throughout the year for them to exercise on. I see Councilmember Ellison's camera is back.
Yes, if I could jump in, um, here, if the other council members are done with their questions for now. Um, my question was about section I with support. Councilmember Rizzo brought up, uh, one of my concerns as well. Even if we were to get the PD facility passed, it wouldn't be available till 2022. So I appreciate the discussion about how we would accomplish this because for me, the language, as I read it and I, um, could provide for some ambiguity on that, uh, with providing a secure and appropriate location. It's a bit subjective of what appropriate location would be. We could probably all agree on what a s- secure location would be. Not sure that a private gym would, would meet that expectation as well. My other, uh, comments were geared towards, uh, just the overall providing of these services. Cause I know a couple of my colleagues on the dais mentioned that they have equipment themselves. I was curious if that was provided by the agency or if that was, uh, something they pursued on, on their own accord. Um, but I guess this, this support item is, is, I knew this was going to come up. And I, I, I guess I would just wanted to really understand how we would accomplish that and what level of, um, expectations and support that the city might need to have. Cause with an approval of this, uh, that would be an automatic commitment to future budgeting funds for these things as well.
Well, I can, I can answer the question about how, how, you know, it was discussed amongst the, the parties at the table. Uh, of course, you know, the, your, your, your prior question about, uh, you know, if the ones that council member Tobias and Villa Lobos have were provided by their employers or purchased on their own, uh, you know, obviously they need to answer that. But, um, it basically what was described, and, and there were a couple of different options that were passed them around. And one that like Sandra was alluding to is that the city just pays for a, uh, a membership to a gym. But there was objections to doing that to certain degrees for various different reasons, uh, on both sides. So it wasn't just the, the city side saying, well, that, that's a cost, you know, that, you know, we're spending every single month and so on and so forth. There's also concerns on their side about doing it that way. Their, their idea, and I think the idea that I walked away with and kind of embraced too, was, you know, just like renting one of the little, yeah, one of the little metal building type, you know, areas in our different warehouse districts where you see like the high impact training, uh, folks operating with the roll up doors. As long as it could be, you know, it could have a shower, a shower or two. I don't really know if there's specific, uh, requirements on, we have to have, you know, if it's a unisex shower, it doesn't really matter. Uh, that, you know, if you, if you have just one, uh, but it also have the ability to be, you know, cooled somehow uh, with, with climate control and, and heated, of course, during the winter. So I think those things can be accomplished with the various facilities we have in town. I know Cristiano was doing some research and unfortunately I just don't have the results of what she found. Uh, but that's what they were thinking too. So nothing necessarily overboard or, uh, really above and beyond, you know, not, uh, you know, building a, a huge, you know, gym, gym with full gymnasium capabilities, but, but just so something so that they could exercise, they could shower before their shift or they could shower after their shift, uh, and, and be cleaned up either going to work or coming home. And, uh, I think everyone that exercises, you know, understands the importance of that. And then, um, you know, the climate control is, is probably the biggest unknown right now. Just because some of those buildings you can rent right now already have climate control built into them, but they may not have the ability for a, a, a shower to be added. So there's a little bit of work on our part. I know today we could provide space somehow at public works and provide the showers at public works. And we could meet the spirit of what they're looking to do. That's not going to excite them, but we could meet the spirit. And then that gives us enough time to be able to find the right space that they agree to, uh, is affordable or is reasonably affordable. Uh, and then, and then provide that space to them, you know, until there's a permanent solution.
Yes, sir. And I appreciate that explanation. I guess my concern is it won't just be these representatives that are negotiating this right now. In the spirit of it, they may, um, feel comfortable about that solution now. But perhaps a different administration that is negotiating this might not feel it's meeting the spirit of what is in there. And when you have language like secure and appropriate location, that could mean various different things to various different individuals. So that, that is my concern with that language kind of being ambiguous.
Um, this is Councilman Tobias again, to answer your question, uh, Councilman Ellison. Um, these are equipment that I purchased on my own and Villa Lobos did on these, I can't speak to them. But, uh, we do have finally a facility at our department to where we can go 24/7. But it's taken many years to get done. Uh, but a lot of the emphasis on the health and this testing is placed on us as officers as our own responsibility. We have to take responsibility for our own health. We are responsible for our own testing. We, uh, we, we, like they said, you can bring a horse to water, but if you ain't going to drink, it ain't going to drink. You know, we can build a gym, we can build a concept rowers, but will they utilize only at the time to where you got to do the testing? So I, I understand where this is going. Again, the whole focus is, is the health of the officer and the people. Um, but we are, as far as I am, I invested my own because I'm responsible for my own health. But if we do provide them some form of concept rower, some exercise equipment, wherever it's at, they may not like the facility, but at least it's available to them. And we're giving them at least something for them to be able to start off.
Yes, sir.
Councilmember.
I, I, I think it's, I think it's the, the idea behind this also is that we're going to require some certain levels of wellness and fitness by our officers. And by the very virtue of the contract, if we're going to require certain levels of wellness and fitness, even though we're implementing it and scaling it in, then therefore, what are we providing to them to get to that point? Right? And I understand, and I, I fully on board with what you're saying, Councilmember Tobias, because, you know, tho- those are the things that, you know, if you're going to be in that position, you have to take a lot of, um, uh, self-initiative and create a certain level of importance to ensure that you do not create a liability for your, for your fellow officers and out in the field when something bad happens, right? And that, I think that's the, that, those are the things that, uh, uh, can create some issues. But again, we need to, if we're going to acquire a certain level of fitness, then there's a certain level of, of services that we need to make sure that they have access to, to ensure that we, they're, that they're meeting those needs, those meeting those minimum elements source.
This is Councilmember Rizzo. I, 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 I hear what y'all are saying. I, I don't think that's where Councilmember Ellison was going. I think he was talking about the language that's in there as far as the facility itself, the building. I believe that the language there would refer to us having to put together a really, really good building and not piece it together, like trying to put it in a metal building, trying to retrofit, you know, AC, trying to, uh, put up makeshift showers or something like that. I think that's his biggest concern was the language in there about the building. I, 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 I hear what he's saying and, and that's, I, I kind of understand his concern. Cause well, I understand his concern because I'm kind of thinking the same thing too. And I was talking about space was that that language holds us as a city to make sure we provide proper facilities. And, and that doesn't mean, I, to me, it, it doesn't mean like a makeshift, uh, gym. It, it, that language holds us to a higher standard. And I want to make sure that we can put some language in there that, you know, we can, we can work to that standard and not have to do it right away, you know, to where we're working slowly to it. Cause it, it, you know, we've got to find the fu- the funding for it first of all, and then try to, to find a facility. And if it is public works, you know, what, what does, is it going to entail to make sure we put the facility together? Whether we're building a small room inside the building, uh, drop ceilings and, and metal framing or what we're doing to accomplish that goal, uh, to bring in a proper facility. So, uh, I, 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 I guess, uh, I'm, I'm kind of worried about that language as well. So, um, yeah.
Well, counsel, allow me to make a comment. Um, I, I don't know, since we're following the DPS assessment. Um, if you look at DPS, uh, they are not provided with facilities um, or with a stipend for a gym membership or anything like that. Um, so I think if we provide a, a, a facility for them is going above and beyond if that's something that we want to do, but it's not required. And I don't know with the new PD, if it passes, if we would have a, a training room there already, a gym.
It, it will have allocated space for a gym. Um, I, I think it's the contract that the way it's wording is actually, uh, requiring us to provide that facility. I ju- I just, and I don't, it's not that I don't want to give them that facility. I just want to make sure we can do it, uh, in a timely manner, given the time to, to achieve that goal. And we want to achieve that goal. We just want to have the provided time to, to allow us to do that, you know? So that, I think that's what my concern is right now. And, 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 uh, yeah, but I, I, I thank you, Sandra. That's a good clarification about what DPS is doing. Appreciate it.
So then we'll allow any other council members that haven't spoke to speak before I jump back in. Hearing done. Uh, so thank you, uh, Mr. Duran. That is exactly part of what I'm getting at too, as well on top of the point that, uh, Councilmember Rizzo elaborated on. Uh, so my concern is both with the language. And then my other concern is that is, that, that was why I was proposing the question to, uh, Councilmember Tobias and Villa Lobos that they, they took that on themselves because that is an importance to one, their profession, but also their fellow officers. And that's what I was trying to understand because even, I knew this was coming. And from what I've been looking at, I haven't seen where an agency does provide these things. Uh, yeah, we, we might have something in the future. The PD facility would certainly have a gym and training area and all that would be addressed. Um, but we're not in that, that realm right now. And, um, I think that, you know, committing to something like this, when it is not a precedent really for that at other agencies, that, that could, that commits councils, future councils, uh, budgets to accept this because of the language in, in here that is, in, in Mr. Duran's words, above and beyond. Uh, so those two things are, are my concerns with this.
I assume we have to pass something in order to keep meet and confer agreement on schedule.
What deadlines are we, are we up against right now?
The direction was to have this, by, by council's direction was to have this adopted by the end of the fiscal year. Uh, whatever council action, whatever action council takes has to be ratified by the association or vice versa. The association has the agreement first and they vote to endorse it, then the council would then following ratify. But we've brought it to the council first, so the association has not seen or debated this yet.
James, sorry, has anybody else got a question before I go back on? Uh, I want to take everybody, all the time.
Well, my questions are if, you know, I'm,
Go ahead.
You know, we're in, we're, we're starting the next year of a meet and confer agreement. They, they rotate on the fiscal year, which is why we had this as the deadline. Uh, this section has to be negotiated in order for their contract raises, uh, to, uh, move forward. So if we're still to a point where we want to discuss and deliberate, we need to take into consideration the ramification of that, uh, on the department. Unless I'm, unless I'm, you know, mistaken and this is not a critical part of the overall meet and confer agreement.
Uh, my understanding was council passed the, or ratified the meet and confer agreement with the caveat that this language would be added before the end of the, of the, of the current fiscal year.
And if we couldn't, the assumption there is if we couldn't come to a mutual agreement between the association and the city, that it would, uh, that it was, I mean, we had a long discussion about it and, and how it would be set up. That this is something we needed to resolve in order for the meet and confer agreement to, to move forward, you know, substantially intact.
Yeah, I, I think, I mean, Paige can obviously weigh in, but I think the, the gist is, is that the, the contract itself never speaks to there being a delay in implementation or what have you. If this isn't adopted, it has more to do with the action that council took in December.
I'm just saying, I'm just referring back to what was, what was spoken about the nature of that vote.
Mayor, you're correct. That, that was part of the motion.
So I just want to make sure the table is set and we understand what we're discussing here in its entirety.
Final, final question, James, just, uh, uh, I, I think that, uh, the, uh, facility you talked about uh, would probably, uh, suffice for now until we got a better facility. Uh, my, my, I guess my hope is just that the police, uh, police, the police, uh, association will, uh, be okay with us working towards that project. And I think they will be. I, I think we've got a good group of, uh, officers there and I, I think they'll, they'll give us the adequate time to, to accommodate them to, to fill those needs.
I mean, the one thing I can say is that we've specifically identified the three characteristics that it has to have. It has to have showers, it has to have the equipment and it has to have climate control. So those are the three things that, that we're obligated to provide.
And is the point that you're making that if those, uh, if we haven't built out a gym for them, that this portion of the uh, meet and confer and the physical health requirements will not be in effect until such a time as we're able to get it established?
Uh, I think that that is exactly how it would be interpreted on their side and on my, and on our side.
Okay.
Um, Councilmember Ellison, um, what kind of language would you like to see in order for us to pass this? So instead of, I know you said it was amb- ambiguous. How would you like to maybe kind of make it more, uh, just give it more clarity?
Besides striking I altogether?
Yes, I guess so. Yes.
Um, for me, I think it's, it's just, I mean, secure, like I said, I think that can be mutually agreed upon, it, it, a secure place. Um, obviously with, um, hardware and different things that would, would keep them, uh, in a place that they're not with the public is what I'm, I'm assuming secure means. Uh, and an appropriate location, I guess that's, once again, what, what does that mean? What would that be, um, amenable to both e- ends? That, you know, a room, um, with a couple of rowers and showers at public works, does that s- suffice for appropriate location, you know, or whatever else that, that tends to be on. So tho- those are my concerns. I would have also, um, and I understand, uh, setting of the table, but I also would have appreciated maybe seeing this before the 11th hour or the last month, uh, in order to get something, um, with more, more feedback from us on that.
Well, I think the association would be happy to continue discussion so long as it doesn't jeopardize their standing under the meet and confer agreement. That's just my guess. But if our position will be that the meet and confer agreement cannot proceed until this section is finalized, uh, then we need to do whatever is necessary to make sure that happens.
So there's no way for the meet and confer to continue through October 1st without this part being negotiated and hammered out?
If I, if I may, what I understood when the city council adopted the meeting confer agreement with the caveat was about the, the raises, the step increases. So we broke those in year one, year two, and year three. And so for what I understood is that the council said you would not get year two until this piece is figured out. So I don't process those step increases until October. But right now you have the rest of September to kind of iron the details out. But that's the way I understood it. That was just the money piece and not the whole entire agreement that was going to be affected if we halted. But Paige, I could be wrong.
Well, that's sort of the, the centerpiece of the agreement. It's the most relevant section there. So I've heard Councilor Ellison and Councilor Rizzo express some reservations. Perhaps the two of y'all would like to work on it over the next couple of weeks and we'll try to get it back for consideration on the 15th.
So Councilmember Villalobos is the appointed representative from the management side as far as council goes?
Yeah, I wasn't recommending that they, that they engage with the association. I was recommending that they engage with you.
Okay.
Well, James, just real quick. If we change the language for a location within the city limits of Kyle, would that be agreeable to the association from, you know, your interaction with them?
I, I believe so. I mean, I don't think that the, I don't think that there was malintent with the word appropriate. I, I see Councilmember Ellison's point about interpretation. So if, if you just want to strike the one word appropriate, then maybe that satisfies. But I'm also hearing, you know, preference on, on Councilmember Ellison's part not to provide this at all. Within that, you know, that's a dramatic, you know, shift in the negotiations. And I know they're listening to this conversation and Councilmember Villalobos can represent y'all's direction. That, that's, that's the two things that I can see. We have to be very careful. Technically, we're supposed to vote it up or down and not renegotiate after the negotiations are done. Because then the association could get it and make changes they want to make, send it back. And it winds up being a lot of people trying to negotiate. But, but I do think, you know, whenever items that are concerning about, you know, language or what have you, I think it's very wise to consider, you know, striking such a language or rephrasing it or saying what is defined as appropriate. If that, if that is the hangup that we want to address, how do you define appropriate? And if that's defined as having one of the, having those three things, then, then that's your definition or you struck the word altogether. So I don't think that the, that the association will care if it says within the city of Kyle because that's what we were going to do anyway. I just don't know if that addresses Councilmember Ellison's concerns completely or not.
Right, and I understand. I was just thinking, yes, we could strike the word appropriate and then just make sure that the location was within the city limits. And I wasn't sure if that was something that Councilmember Ellison would be amenable to. So I just was trying to come up with something for right now to move this forward a little bit.
So it would just read, provide a secure location for officers to exercise. You would strike the comma and the word appropriate.
This is Councilmember Rizzo, that would work for me. I'd be good with that if we wanted to make that amendment. Is it an amendment we make or we just strike it? And, and then whatever Councilmember Ellison, I think I'd like to hear from his feedback as well because he, he had questions on it as well.
Well, I certainly don't want to do anything out of bounds. If we just need to vote up or down this addition to the contract, which we all voted for unanimously last December and in full support of the meet and confer contract. It's just this physical fitness part. And I was not appointed as the liaison for the council to give input. So therefore the document was brought as it is. And if, if that is the appropriate step to vote up or down, then I'm open to taking the appropriate step of what we need to do.
I don't mean to speak from the legal standpoint, but I don't think striking the word appropriate changes the, the meat of the document. Taking out "I" would, obviously. So, but striking the word appropriate, I don't think is, is a significant change. So I don't think that it's inappropriate to say to, if you are comfortable approving it, you know, the draft with the Scrivener changes, the, the, the lettering going into the appropriate section of the, of the meet and confer document and then striking the word appropriate and just saying a secure location. I don't think that's inappropriate, but Paige, maybe it's best if you answer that question for him.
And James, this is Councilmember Villalobos too. Just, I think with regards to appropriate, I think a lot of them were concerned about coming in and working out prior to shift and not having the ability to shower before coming in, putting a uniform on, going on to shift as well. This provides that opportunity for them. When they're talking about appropriateness is appropriate to have the, the facilities to, to do this and then also prepare to come back on to shift. That's what they were, that was the, what I felt like was the, the spirit of what they were asking for. Secure meaning, you know, yes, you can close the door, lock it and also not be afraid that, you know, if you had a secure area that the equipment would, wouldn't be, you know, handled inappropriately and those types of things. So I mean, I think that's, that's the spirit of it. It's no different than us having an agreement over zoning. What's appropriate and what's, what's inappropriate. So at this point, you know, taking, taking that one piece out as far as appropriate is concerned, just understanding that the spirit of it is, is that we're going to provide them the opportunity coming in because this is a requirement for wellness and fitness based on what direction that the council gave in the past, get to a certain level, that they would have that opportunity to clean themselves before they went on shift. I think that's, at a minimum, that's something that we should be providing if we're going to have those, those types of standards, right? Because we don't have those in the, in the PD, the current PD at all.
Just to, this is Paige.
Are there agencies, to my point earlier, same thing? Would they provide that, that same support in the, in that we're talking about in "I"?
Yes, in my previous agency, I had showers and a place to, to clean both before or after or during.
But was it guaranteed in a contract?
No, it was not guaranteed in the contract. But if, given the fact that they, they had certain wellness standards, then you had to provide something for them to be able to be suitable to come to work.
I, I see your point. I, I disagree with your connection to zoning, but, you know, and I understand working out and how that works and people want to be clean, I get that. That, that is not in dispute here. It's simply that, you know, putting, putting that language in a contract just puts it on every future councilman budget in order to make that support. Yes, with the PD facility, this will all be a mute point. And, and I, you know, I, I want it to be a mute point in the future. But that, that is just not the situation we currently find ourselves in. And that's what I'm making this decision on.
Understood, sir, thank you. I know that also when you have that ambiguous, the, the more larger language, when you talk about appropriate, I think that's a benefit on both sides instead of taking it out.
Councilmember Villalobos, I just want, Councilmember Rizzo, I want to thank you for that clarification. What, what that means to me is that a secure location not only means them working out securely, but their equipment being securely, whether it's a sidearm or, or whatever they have on them, radios, tasers, you're able to lock those up, know that nobody's going to be able to access those unless it's the officer. And I, I can see how this is important. And thank you for that clarification on there. It, it really helps me on my decision. But yeah, thank you.
Mayor, I'd like to make a, a motion to approve an amendment to the meet and confer agreement between the city of Kyle and Kyle law enforcement station to adopt physical fitness standards in accordance with the conditional approval of the agreement with some Scrivener, you know, adjustments and also a strikeout of the word appropriate in "I".
Is there a second? Okay, motion fails for lack of a second. What do you want to do?
I have a question with regards to the contract in general, with regards to the language. And I, I think if, if we, if I can ask those questions, I think it's going to be appropriate that we ask those language questions in an executive session before we take any action on it? Can we bring that back to discuss?
You're talking about at the end of the meeting?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Is there any objections to moving on? Seeing none, I'm going to go ahead and move on. Next up is agenda item number 20. First reading and ordinance of the city of Kyle, Texas, amending the sign ordinance and other, and others. Gary Bickford.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and Councilor Gary Bickford. Good enforcement officer for the record. This evening I'm bringing forward to you a bunch of just minor ordinance revisions and kind of cleaning up some language. Some of our ordinances haven't been touched and since, a couple of them are from 1995. So just trying to clean up some language. I'm willing to go through each one individually to kind of assist council with any decision they want to take. Just let me know how you guys want me to handle that.
You want to go over the two or three big points?
Yes, absolutely. Kind of a couple of big, of the big, big points. There's a big change to how we handle junk vehicle abatement to go through our municipal court. There's current language in there currently to go through council. If someone wants to appeal a decision on a junk vehicle. Can everyone still hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay, perfect. I had something on my end. So yeah, so there's a couple of changes. One's big for junk vehicle abatement. It goes through municipal court and allows for an appeal process to go through the court and kind of free up council. There's a change about fluttering signs, making those legal. So the ones that are in front of a couple of businesses in town. And then as well as kind of a change to our trailer parking ordinance to essentially reduce the hours and allow trailers to park on the street, to go from 72 hours every 30 days to 24 hours every 32 day, 30 days, just to kind of, kind of make it a little more enforceable, a little clearer. This is how you get one day every 30 days of a trailer on the street. And another change is fence, fence height in residential areas, changing the, what is currently required, six, six feet to go to eight feet in height for residential share fences. Other than that, everything else is just kind of minor. And also one other big talking point is having a citizens complaint process that's clear for a citizen to follow. If they just choose to either go through the municipal court for their violation or however they want to handle it, to have some sort of input towards the process on how violations are handled. Available for any questions if needed.
I have a question. This is Councilmember Shield. What was the thought process from going from a fence height of six feet to eight feet?
So thought process for that originally came from a couple of, a couple of complaints. We had some citizens in an old neighborhood that really had some issue with not being allowed to have an eight foot fence. And the whole thought process was being is this kind of, it would allow for more privacy. It would allow for kind of just some different thought processes on how tall fences are essentially. Because as it currently stands in the current ordinance, you're allowed to have a six foot fence residential areas, but there's provisions in there that if you have a swimming pool or you get back up to some utilities or you back up to a, to a major road, you're allowed to have an eight footer, 10 foot fence to block out that portion. So allowing eight foot fences would kind of close that gap between those certain situations and would also kind of allow citizens who live to have more privacy if they'd like.
Okay, so that's, but they can still have a six foot fence if they still want that, okay.
Yes, it allows, it allows up to eight feet. It doesn't prohibit anything below six feet, it just allows up to eight.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure about that because a lot of HOAs, you know, to keep with conformity, excuse me. Oh, excuse me again. You'll require just six foot fences, so I just wanted to make sure about that.
Yes, this provision would not, not alter any, any pre-existing. It would actually allow residents to have two feet taller fences if they so choose. Obviously, they still have to follow their HOA rules, but HOA rules versus city ordinances are completely different. So this would really mainly affect your areas that aren't governed by an HOA.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
This is Councilmember Rizzo. So you talk about this formity of an eight foot fence, six foot fence, and now we start going up and down. My other concern is that you have to follow rules of HOA. So say the neighborhood behind you doesn't have to and behind that HOA neighborhood, now you've got taller fences over there. My biggest worry is what happens every time we have a, a storm event is that we have fences down everywhere. Create, creating that other two feet is now creating a bigger umbrella where we could have more potential, more fences being down. And that concerns me as well. But I, I actually brought this subject up months ago. And one of the things that really resonated with me was the conformity of it. And, you know, it, it, to me, it would look like a mismatch going up, down, up, down, up, down. I don't know, maybe it's just me overthinking it, but to me it wouldn't look really right. But the other thing is that now creating that bigger fence, you're going to get more wind damage when we, when we have those high storms and high winds. And I've been through neighborhoods where the, the fences are all down and they've got a certain time to bring them back up. But now you're going to, you're going to have more fences down at a greater number. So did we take that into consideration when we decided to, to change this?
I did take some considerations, Councilmember Rizzo. The only, the thought being was generally eight foot fences are generally better built. They generally have three, three to four slats, reference your solid two that you get currently. And also kind of to go on that look aspect of tall, up, up tall and short. The ordinance also allows for a three foot chain link fence. So you kind of get that same look, look anyway as you stand right now because it doesn't prohibit someone from having a smaller chain link fence versus a six foot wooden fence. And I know in my time in the city, in the short time that I've been here for the last couple of years, most of the six foot fences around here are falling apart left and right. Even in some of the newer neighborhoods, the fences are kind of falling apart or aren't being kept that bad. And I would think that an eight foot fence is generally constructed a little bit better to account for that wind issue and that storm potential.
I, I would hope, but I, I've seen a lot of the fences throughout the city and they're not built to with, with weather. A lot of the storms we have, I, I, if we're going taller, I think we Uh, I, I, if we're going taller, I think we need to put it in a regulation to uh, uh, make sure that that happens. Whether we have to go with metal posts and uh, at a shorter distance as well. You know, that ten-foot uh, span might be too much for an eight-foot fence, uh, something to uh, keep in consideration. Um, but yeah, I, I don't want to seem like I'm, I'm a hundred percent against eight-foot uh, fences. I'm just thinking about the disformity. And also the wind damage and, and uh, it, just the quality that I've been seeing lately has left me in awe. You know, the, the work that's out there uh, just isn't up to par. I'm not, I'm not real excited about uh, what I've seen when I go investigate some of these. Fences that have been knocked down. The, the work's been really shoddy, to tell you the truth.
I would tend to agree with you on that quite a bit. Um, I've seen my fence in my neighborhood that I live in is just as bad. So I totally understand that my neighborhood was built in two thousand and six, so. It's kind of, it's kind of one of those things. Um. Unfortunately, when it comes to regulating how fences are built, I believe that goes through either planning and zoning or the building department. So we definitely would have to get them involved. But I'd be all for either stronger fences because I know from a code enforcement standpoint, it creates kind of a look when you're going through a neighborhood and the fences don't look the greatest. Uh, it causes issues to animals and stuff like that with animals getting loose because fences are knocked down from storms. Uh, all kinds of stories that you get. So I'm all for, if we could shore up our construction of fences to kind of. A, make them look better and B, just make them stronger so that we're not having some of the issues we're having around town with look. As well as security of keeping animals and keeping anyone else out, that sort of stuff. I'd be all for that.
Thank you.
Councilmember Rizzo, I believe uh, Howard Kuntz is on this call and I believe he may have some insight on the. Background to strengthening up our requirements for building of fences. Is Howard willing to step in on this conversation?
Yeah, I am. Thanks, Gary. Uh, for the record, my name's Howard Kuntz. I'm the Community Development Director for the city of Kyle. Um, I just wanted to point out that the International Residential Code will now require fences uh, to be permitted and inspected. Uh, the, the current process today does not require uh, permits for privacy fences that um, residents install on their properties. Because the height is limited to six feet. Uh, they are required to be code compliant, but we leave that up to the property owner to maintain their code compliance, but they, they are not required to be permitted. The International Residential Code will require uh, permitting. And um, a part of that permitting process is going to have to be engineered drawings to show that the wind load is capable of uh, keeping the fence up. Um, at, 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 at the, those certain speeds of where uh, the certain wind and I, and I can't remember the mile per hour rating off the top of my head. But I know that they have to be hardened against being able to be destroyed by a straight line winds. So this uh, this is gonna create a, a, a change in, in policy uh, for that fact alone.
Uh, so you hit a key word was permitting. Uh, so what kind of drawings do they have to submit for something like this? Are they gonna have to get an engineer to come out and do a fence or are they gonna be able to do it on their own still, uh, draw something out themselves?
They'll have to be engineered. We, we require drawings like that for certifications. They need to be signed off on by a state certified professional before they can be submitted to the department. And uh, we keep those on record for a time period after their certificate of completion is issued. Uh, to make sure um, in, in case something does go wrong down the line, that we can hold the uh, the, whoever rendered that drawing accountable. Uh, for signing off on it, that it was uh, uh, wind load certified. So yes, they, they will be required to have engineered drawings submitted. I don't know necessarily that it requires a site visit. Uh, that's up to the individual engineer who draws it, but um. It's, it's a typical practice to have engineer drawings, uh, standard, standard drawings can often be included. I know that um. You're familiar with modular block walls like Allen Block and, and other types of, of block walls. There's standard drawings that can be applied for those. Sometimes they need to be individually tailored and individual uh, or um, engineered to a specific site. Fencing could be the same way, but at the very least, they'll need to be original stamped certified drawings each time they pull a permit for a fence that's uh, eight feet.
That's to add a fence. How about to uh, uh, reconstruct a fence that was knocked down by wind or your storm?
Uh, anytime they establish a new one, uh, that exceeds the uh, exception, they'll have to submit drawings along with it. So if they're replacing one that was there previously, it will need to be uh, code compliant to be replaced.
Okay, see, uh, I worry about the uh, the added cost of having to get an engineer to come out and do that. Um, I know there's plenty of people that are capable of building a good fence and usually the fences that go down are because of the contractor, not. The homeowner, because usually the homeowner comes back with a better fence after they get tired of putting that, that original fence down. And I'm going to tell you, a lot of this is on the contractors. It's not the homeowners, but now we're going to put this cost on the homeowners and it's going to be. Uh, putting up a fence is now going to be uh, something you have to really save for. Um, so that worries, that concerns me a little bit. Uh, do you know, estimate of what something like that would cost on a normal uh, thirty-five or forty-five uh, uh, foot lot?
I, I don't. I don't think that it can be standardized because you've got different practitioners who charge different rates for their services.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm, I'm really worried about adding this cost on there. I, I know the intention is great, though. I love the intention of, of putting up quality fences. I love that. I just, when we start going into that permitting and requiring engineering, uh, it, it's gonna, it's gonna make it unaffordable for some people to put up fences, even if they want to bring an animal in. Uh, into their uh, family. Now they might not be able to do that because they can't afford to uh, do the fence because of the engineering costs and everything associated with.
Well, don't be mistaken. If they don't build a fence that's in excess of the exception, then they don't need to have it permitted or engineered.
Also, it's only over six foot.
Six-foot fences or, or shorter fences like um.
Okay.
Six, six feet is, y'all know how tall we are. I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm not a short man. I'm, I'm, I'm over six-five. And you're talking about a fence that's a solid eighteen inches taller than I am?
Yeah. So it's, it's only on the, it's only, the only permitting will be on the eight-foot fence, not the six-foot fence?
Uh, it will be the ones in excess of six feet. Yes, sir.
Oh, okay, that's great. Oh, okay, Howard, then I'm good. Uh, I appreciate that. Thank you for the explanation. I yield the floor, Mayor.
Other thoughts? Are you all ready to take action on this or do you want to wait?
Mayor Mike Skreef froze. I, I can't see what nine item that is, but I'd like to make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Rizzo, seconded by Councilmember Shields. Any further discussion? Uh, I, I'm not in favor of eight-foot fences being allowed anywhere in residential neighborhoods uh, at the discretion of the tenant. I, I think the current laws that we have in place and rules that we have in place around exceptions for eight-foot fences. Make a lot of sense, uh, allowing for someone to apply for variances also makes sense. You know, there are certainly times when an eight-foot fence makes sense. Uh, I think that, uh, you know, eight-foot fences, you know, scattered throughout residential subdivisions at the will of the. Uh, resident is, is a bad idea. If you live on a major road, yes. On a perimeter, yes. Next to a. Uh, commercial buildings, yes. Uh, in the interior of a residential lot, which is what this appears to do. Uh, seems to be a pretty rash and bold change of stance. Um, so, uh, on that point at least, I'm certainly fine with the majority of what's written here, but on that point, uh, I'm not in favor. So.
I mean, and I'm in agreement because um, you know, as I said, the HOAs protect. Most of those neighborhoods, but there are, you know, our three um, big neighborhoods and when you share a fence. And one neighbor wants the eight-foot and the other one is fine with the six-foot, it, it can't become an issue even between neighbors. So.
The shared cost is what you're talking about, Tracy, correct?
Not just the shared cost, but you know, the aesthetic of it for, you know, one neighbor, they may not want such a tall fence.
Um, I know I wouldn't.
Yeah, I, I don't think I would either. So um, there was, you know, that issue. And as I said, while some of the neighborhoods are protected with the HOAs, we have several within the community that are not. And I am concerned about that.
Counsel, can I step in for a second and make a comment? I'm certainly amendable to allowing six-foot fences. I'd like to put something in there then that would allow us to. Kind of strengthen the way they're built because the only issue I'm foreseeing with six-foot fences is. We've got a bunch of neighborhoods in this, in this community that are less than ten years old and the fences are already falling apart. So I'd like to see some sort of ability to hold either contractors accountable or something to kind of strengthen up the fences around. So we're not having the issues that we're having currently with neighborhoods that are less than ten years old with fences that are falling apart already.
And I'm in agreement to that, but you know, the person who's responsible for that is the builder themselves. Um, yeah, in, in a lot of ways in the new neighborhoods.
No, I, I was going to suggest the person responsible is the seven of us and staff who say appropriate standards, so.
Right, yes.
The, the reality is that when you build based on affordability as the primary argument, you get uh, you get, you get what we have.
I am well aware of that.
Well, I'm just making the point that we discuss affordability quite a bit. Um, and this council takes action qu- uh, as often as it can to try to uh, prevent, you know, um. Lot costs and development costs from being high. Um, you know, for a considerable amount of time, we have, we have allowed for developers to build on the basis of price point alone. Which means that you're going to get the lowest uh, standard of everything. Lowest quality doors, the lowest quality fences, the lowest quality, uh, the, the less, the least amount of sod that they have to put in, the least amount of brick they have to put in. Uh, the, the tightest you can pack them in there. I mean, it's just, it's part of it. It's a part of our development philosophy. Uh, and this is, this is just the result uh, of that type of philosophy when developments are built. Uh, without longevity, uh, and you know, maintenance in, in mind, which. To, to their point, to the developer's point, is a, an argument on affordability because if the fence costs them two thousand dollars to install. Uh, on the cheap and we throw in regulations that require for concrete anchors, metal poles. Um, you know, wrought iron, masonry, on and on, uh, it, all it does is drive the cost up. Our job is to decide what do we think is the appropriate uh, standard that we should set for development in the city and I don't. I, I, I don't think that the answer is going to be found in the height. I think the answer is going to be found uh, in the substance. Uh, so, uh, but at the same time, you know, we've got to be very careful because the, the city has had a, had a position on fences for a very, very long time. And if you go making substantial changes, especially changes that will affect uh, existing neighborhoods. Uh, if your fence gets torn down substantially and you got to redo it and it, and now all of a sudden it has to be engineered, uh, you have a lot of u- upset residents, so. Just one more example of how incredibly challenging it is to be in our position. Uh, but it's our job to try to, to try to set the standard we think is appropriate and then just live by the consequences of those decisions, whether folks agree with it or not. Uh, so, you know, for myself, I've always been on the side of uh, creating uh, standards that I know will elevate the development. Trajectory and quality of life and maintenance costs of all of our subdivisions, so. Uh, I'm fine to amend it. I would expect that some of the amendments for quality would need to take place in. Uh, the design guide, uh, and our residential style guide, because that's a, that's a document that's meant for developers. It's not about uh, holding a homeowner to some ridiculous standard when they want to fix their fence. Uh, it's about making sure that developers put it in the right way the first time.
Exactly.
That was one of the many, that was one of the, the sticking points with Lennar, if y'all will recall. Uh, as we were trying to make sure that development uh, met a high quality is we focused in on the fences. Uh, and if it, you know, I think we should codify those kind of rules in standards throughout our city, that, 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 some of those rules that we put in with Lennar. Um, so.
Yeah, I, so do we have something in place, say somebody has a, is next to a, a. Of structure next to a, maybe a junkyard or something like that, you know, just throwing things out there. Do you have some place where they could put an eight-foot fence in right now? Because what I got last.
Already there.
It's there. Because.
For my understanding, if you have a, if your property abuts commercial uh, property, you can build an eight-foot fence by right. I could be wrong, Howard. Uh, feel free to correct.
It is, it is currently in there. That allows for that.
He's, if, so the, the current rule generally, without getting too specific, is that. Um, residential that is adjacent to and directly abuts an equal land use. Then the height restriction is six feet. If the residential is directly adjacent to and abuts a dissimilar land use, so in this case, commercial warehouse. Maybe utilities, rail line, as the train passes me right now. Um, some other type of use that could be objectionable, then they're entitled to a taller fence. My, my understanding was that it was eight. Uh, I, I don't know that it's nine. I'd have to go back.
It's actually, it's actually up to ten, as it's currently written in the ordinance. It is currently written up to ten.
That sounds right.
So. Yeah, there, there already is a provision for certain nuisances that are, that are in there um, in specific cases.
Would that address maybe being adjacent to a property that was an empty lot and maybe had a bunch of junk cars in it? Would that work there or not?
No, it would not.
Depends on what the, the land use category is for the adjacent property with the junk cars.
Okay.
Um, if it was a commercial property and it was a recycling yard, then yes, you would be able to. If it was just your next door neighbor Cletus who just has a bunch of cars in his backyard, then you need to call Gary and have them deal with that.
Good, uh, because Gary, you might be getting a phone call from a, a resident in Kyle uh, that lives near downtown, so definitely they might, you might be getting a phone call from that resident. Uh, but thank you. Um, you know, with everything we've talked, I'd like to rescind my motion.
Okay, motion.
I'll rescind my second.
All right, the motion's rescinded. Uh, there's some other stuff in here. Do y'all, uh, do y'all want to circle back now that you've heard the feedback? Uh, and bring this back to us. Uh, what do you want to do? Gary, do you, is this uh, uh, time sensitive? Uh, would you prefer that we look at the rest of the amendments?
As far as I know, it, it needs two readings like most other ordinance changes anyway, so I believe we can take this back to second reading. As far as I understood, it may not. Um, if it does not require a second meeting or a second reading, I can get that changed out and brought back for the next council meeting.
I'd like to uh, make a motion to approve uh, and to amend section eight B. Uh, uh, back to its original language.
Second.
It's been moved by the mayor, seconded by Councilmember Rizzo. Is there any further discussion? Was that a clear enough amendment?
I'm perfectly content with it, Mayor.
Okay. Uh, all of us in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. Uh, we will bring this item back for a second reading. Uh, next up, agenda item number twenty-one. A resolution of the city of Kyle, Texas determining the order of the propositions for the twenty-twenty bond election and the twenty-twenty charter amendment election. And providing for related matters. Go ahead, Paige.
Mayor and council, page signs for the record. The uh, city council has um, called two elections on propositions of. A bond election that has two propositions and a charter election that has five propositions. The bond election propositions are A and B and the charter election propositions are A through. F, um. Through E, sorry, A through E. Um, in, in um. Considering how the propositions are going to be ordered on the ballot and how information is going to be provided about them, we wanted to get. Uh, the council to approve specifically the order of these propositions on. uh the council to approve specifically the order of these propositions on the ballot. And so this resolution is placed before you for that purpose. If approved, it does two things. First, it provides that the propositions for the bond election will appear on the ballot before the propositions for the charter election. And then it will also re-letter the propositions for the charter election as C through G instead of A through E. This will um it's fine and appropriate to have two proposition As because that can be distinguished on the ballot as a charter election, bond election. But just to add clarity to any kind of information provided about the bond elections and Prop A being uh specifically called out there. The uh this resolution will re-letter the charter election proposition, so you don't have two Prop As and you don't have to distinguish between those two. And I can take any questions.
Paige, my only question is if there is a possibility of uh going to numbers for the charter propositions, and I believe the answer is no, but I just want to confirm.
Correct. The answer is no. State law says we have to use letters now.
Okay, well, I definitely agree with see-through, et cetera. I don't, I don't see any reason to make it more complicated than it needs to be. So I move to approve.
Second.
Second.
It's been moved by the mayor, seconded by Councilor Villalobos. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. Next up, agenda item number 22, a resolution of the City of Kyle uh Texas renaming the swimming pool in Greg Clark Park. This item has a public hearing. Councilor Rizzo, do you want to intro and then I'll open the hearing?
Mayor, uh, I first brought this to council um uh two weeks ago, and one reason was that uh actually, I don't, I don't believe that we're actually renaming the swimming pool. It's always been referred to as the pool at Greg Clark Park. We've never really, as a city, given it an official name. I don't believe so. Uh, somebody correct me if I'm I'm wrong, but you know, a- as we're looking at our history in Kyle, I I I can't help but see that uh we we could do a little bit more to honor those minority leaders that have been here before us that have uh paved the way for future generations. And and I think this is a way, a start for us. And uh, I want to tell you that our former mayor was um a very big advocate for the children in our community. And actually, I first met him on the basketball court. He was there with his grandkids. I was there with my sons. We were playing basketball. And I think he asked me something like, how old are you? Because I was out there playing basketball with my kids and I and I told him my age and he says, he's still a pretty young man. I was a young man back then. And, you know, we had a really good conversation. First time I have sat down and had a really, a real conversation with a city mayor. And it it really resonated with me that he would take time out of his schedule to go out there with his grandkids, talk to the constituents. And then he turned around and told, looked, pointed at the swimming pool and said, um, you know, I I worked hard so the citizens, the kids in our community would have a place to go swimming. And it made me, you know, really appreciate what he did. When I was a kid, we wished we had a swimming pool here in Kyle. Uh, something tried to get proposed at the time and uh it never, it never came to fruition. So Mayor Atkins' vision to to do this was great. When Mayor Atkins was our mayor, he he became mayor when Kyle first became a home rule city. So that's very important because the city was changing and a lot of what we do right now is because of that change. But he uh initiated the first CO bonds for uh current city hall, for our public works building and the swimming pool itself, and brought more to the community. And we've never done anything really as a city to honor him. I know a developer has uh named a street after him, but as a city, I think we could do a little bit more and I'd like to see us do a little bit more. And I think this is a small step in in naming the pool after the gentleman that helped bring that pool to the children of our community. And I I would like to see uh um uh this happen. And and one reason is that I I think he was a good advocate for our kids and and uh I think this would be a great uh resemblance of the council on on honoring our our first black mayor in the city of Kyle.
All right, this has, item has a public hearing. Uh, if there are no objections, I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing. I do not believe we have anyone registered to speak on this or any items related to city business this week. Can I get a confirmation of that, please, Samantha or Jennifer?
Jennifer said that there is none.
Okay, if there are no objections, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing. Uh, public hearing is now closed. Comments, thoughts?
I will be supporting uh this effort. Um, I um also appreciate uh some conversations that I had with the former Mayor Atkins. Um, first ever campaign sign I had in this city was uh Mayor Atkins. Uh, and so I've uh appreciate the the personal stories that Councilman Rizzo has shared and some of the other ones that were shared a couple of weeks ago as well, uh, and certainly happy to support um this honoring.
Thank you, Councilmember Wilson.
Any other thoughts?
You know, that the not not knowing him, but then understanding the history and and how that was brought forward, you know, both of my children learned how to swim at that pool. Not to mention represented the city of Kyle through their swim team. And some of the staff members know them and my children have been recognized by the council uh for representing the city of Kyle. Um, when the competitions would come, we'd go to Corpus Christi and other cities just to represent Kyle. It 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 puts a lot of pride in young, young kids when the city council recognizes them. It, it uh it develops a lot of self-confidence. It develops a lot of discipline. And those are all critical things for for all of us to learn from in that it it provides that opportunity for 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 children that that come in to learn, learn to craft the swimming, learn the safety of swimming, and then utilize that pool area for a congregate uh location to to meet new people. But um, some of those blessings of learning how to swim and competing and swim as ath- as athletes has still blessed my family. We've traveled all over the, all over the state and some of those competitions. And and they're, they're so fun. They're, I mean, and they're, they're also learn a lot from a lot of different places, so. Um, you never know what type of blessings and what types of things are going to be uh imparted to a lot of families uh from a project like that. And um I can, I can continue to appreciate that and and thank the Mayor Atkins for for all of his hard work and his legacy that still is giving to a lot of children today. Thank you.
Anyone else? Motions?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the renaming, the naming of uh Kyle, the pool at Greg Clark Park to after Mayor Atkins.
Second. Been moved by Councilor Rizzo, seconded by Councilor Villalobos. Uh, that we approve the ordinance, renaming the pool at Greg Clark Park after uh former Mayor James Atkins. Is there any discussion on the motion?
I just have one question, and that is what would be the name? Do we need to specify the name specifically for the ordinance?
I I think we'd go with Jame- James Atkins.
Okay, thank you.
I have two thoughts. One, I'll save for a couple items down. Uh, the uh well, this is a, this is a resolution, correct? So uh, will it come back for second reading?
No, sir.
So the difference between ordinance and resolution is that the, an ordinance is to change an official state designation like a street? Or is, what's the, what's the difference here?
I can jump in on that if you like, Paige.
Yes.
So the, the naming protocol that the city has set in the code of ordinances, uh, it's section 38 uh 333 and 334 uh says, this is 38334 subsection C, council may adopt the naming of the public place after duly holding a public hearing and with an affirmative vote of its body to pass a resolution declaring the naming or renaming. So it's.
Okay. Well, uh, one point of clarification, uh, just to Councilor Rizzo and what what he said about the current designation uh and honoring of Mayor Atkins, uh, the entrance street to one of our developments is named after Mayor Atkins. Um, it was not the developer who named it that. Uh, it was my predecessor um who uh requested that sign. I don't know that it I'm not sure that it even went through city council at the time because I don't remember making a vote on it. Uh, but that came at the, at the request of the former mayor. Uh, and he should be the one that is given credit for honoring Mayor Atkins with the naming of that entrance street. So um that's the only.
Thank you for that clarification, Mayor. I wasn't aware of that. Um, I I just looked at the city hadn't done anything. Uh, so I didn't know the mayor had done that on his own, so I appreciate the mayor for doing that. And thank you for that clarification. So that that does give credit to those who 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 had that done. So uh, yeah, but I know as a city, we hadn't done it, done anything, but I'm glad that Mayor uh, the former mayor did, and I appreciate that. I'd like to say thank you to him at this time. So yeah, it it's great to honor uh Mayor Atkins. Appreciate it.
Any other uh discussion points? All those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. Next up, agenda item number 23, consider impossible action to approve a resolution creating an ad hoc committee to rename a portion of West Ranch to Market 150. Uh, well, we should take up agenda item number 24 first. Um, if there are no objections, we should, we should do that first and then we'll set up the committee if that's the will of council. So if there are no objections, I'm going to bring up agenda item number 24 instead. Second reading, consider impossible action to approve an ordinance removing the name Rebel Drive uh from West Ranch to Market uh 150. Uh, this is the second version of this, uh, the second vote that we took. Uh, removing Rebel Drive uh as a designated street name in the city of Kyle. Um, not much to add to previous conversations that we've had, but I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Let's take it.
Second.
It's been moved by the mayor, seconded by Councilmember Tobias. Is there any further discussion on the motion?
Mayor, uh, Councilman Rizzo, I just want to remind uh everyone that we've established a small fund to help some businesses on on uh the current FM 150 uh location, so that way uh they're aware that we've got something. I don't know when it'll be implemented, but I I know we've, uh, Councilman Rochelle brought that up and we we uh voted on it on the budget. So uh, just wanted to clarify that.
Anything else? All those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. Next up, agenda item number 23, consider impossible action to approve a resolution creating an ad hoc committee to rename a portion of West Ranch to Market 150.
Mayor and Council, Scott Sellers for the record. We have a a short presentation for you here. I'm going to ask our uh Director of Communications, Samantha Armbruster, to jump in and and kind of steer this one since she will be on the committee. So Samantha.
Hi, Samantha Armbruster, Director of Communications, for the record. And this presentation will walk through the process for the creation of an ad hoc committee by city council and give some framework for discussion as you guys uh decide who would represent the community on this ad hoc committee. So per our city charter, what you see on the screen here is how an ad hoc committee is created. Um, it is, you know, is authorized with the resolution. Um, and because it's an ad hoc committee, it will dissolve one year after its establishment or upon the completion of its purpose. And the committee must meet at least once per quarter. So the makeup of the can, uh, of the committee, uh, there's certain qualifications per city charter, and those are outlined there under qualifications, that they have to be 18, be a citizen, be qualified voter, uh, be a resident of the state of Texas for at least a year and not be delinquent uh to the city. But then we will also plan to ask other questions on the application so that you'll have that information. To review them. Uh, if they're a business owner along the affected roadway that we've discussed, if they're a resident on that same roadway, their duration of residency here in the city of Kyle, if they represent, represent HACISD, and if they've served um or are currently serving on a city border committee. These are just some that we have put on for consideration. Uh, any additional questions could be asked as well, and that can be part of your discussion this evening. Mr. Sellers, will you um flip the presentation slide? So here's what we've put together for the purpose duties and meeting requirements for your consideration. The purpose would be uh to re, propose renaming um the portion of West Ranch to Market 150. The duties would, per the city charter requirements, um, determine the meeting schedule and timeline and present uh the, present that timeline for the recommendations that would come back to city council. The meeting requirements, and this is per the charter, is that if there's more than three absentees that are not excused, that the position would be vacated. Because this is uh, if this was created, uh, it'd be required to be posted as a, with public notice per the Open Meetings Act. And at this time, myself and Steve Clemmons would be the staff liaisons for this committee. So I hope that gives some framework for the discussion. And at this time, we'd love to hear uh from council how you would like to move forward. We would hope to open the applications tomorrow. And here's a list of the ways that the, this particular committee would be advertised.
Thank you, Samantha.
You're welcome.
Any questions or comments?
Samantha, this is Councilman Tobias. I wanted to say thank you for uh working on this and getting the process going. Um, again, we was brought up again uh from discussions last, last week's meeting. Um, it was to basically get more public involvement and getting more community engagement in this process. And I can see that uh some work has been done to try to get some form of application process going uh which I appreciate. It's gonna help again, engage more of the community to get more public support on this uh very um issue with the streets. So I wanted to say thank you for for doing that. And I think the ideas of uh reaching out for websites, uh, also on social media could also get the the public more informed as well of what's going on maybe in the city. And it gives uh, you know, people a chance, an opportunity to serve as well.
Thank you.
Mayor. I'd like to make a motion, please, to consider impossible action to approve resolution creating an ad hoc committee to rename portions of West Ranch to market one fifty.
Second. It's been moved by Councilmember Tobias, seconded by Councilmember Vialobos. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Does nobody find this inconsistent with the action we took two items ago?
Uh, it is inconsistent, but I think that um, for the sake of it, um, obviously our residents are very interested in the naming of this road. So this uh, allows for an opportunity for them to be involved in that. And so um, it is, it is different from what we and past councils have always done, but uh, you know, at the end of the day, um, I think uh, the residents obviously care very much for the name of this road and what it will be. Uh, so I am uh, no objection from me on uh, them being able to participate and, and come up with a name. I almost am amenable to most anything that the, the community of by extension of these seven people, I guess, and uh, I guess they would apply to be on this board. If we have a number of people, then the council would then select based on whatever we felt made them qualified to be on the ad hoc committee.
Yes, all applicants would be available for all of city council to review and choose from as you make your appointments, uh, if we schedule it for September fifteenth.
And Mayor, while I understand uh, what you're saying as uh, being conflicting. Um, you know, this was uh, the, the prior item was actually mentioned before and we got no, I, I didn't anyway, get any response or any um, objection to it being named that by any citizen via email, social media or anything. So I don't think the public outcry for renaming the pool is quite the same as, you know, this particular item. And the way we're handling, and the way we're handling this one. So yes, I do understand why you say they are conflicting, but then again, we just, I, I think the, the, the naming of the pool was, is fine with our constituents, but this one, yeah. We need public input.
Well, um, my opinion is not to say that we shouldn't have committees help us name things, but there's kind of an arbitrary element to you know, uh, choosing to, choosing a committee to name a road. When, you know, the reality is, you know, from the beginning, this particular road is in two parts. Part number one was removing a name and part number two was choosing a name. You know, and I feel like one of the, probably the biggest mistake that was made was that we took those two things and smushed them together. Uh, and, and so that certainly is, is not lost on me. Massive regret is not proposing just to name it RM one fifty from the beginning, which would then give us time to uh, maybe name it uh, next year, once we're in a different frame of mind. Uh, I struggle to believe that anyone is in, is going to be in the, you know, in the right frame of mind for uh, naming a street. Uh, I certainly, you know, have heard from quite a few folks and everybody has great ideas, but it just, the timing of it doesn't really make the most sense at this point, given everything that has taken place. If it was me, if it was up to me, uh, you know, the decision to, to actually give it an affirmative name um, at this point with everything that has happened would be done down the road. Uh, and, and so I, I can't help but shake the feeling uh, that creating a committee, uh, in particular, the, the way that this one is being brought up is more about uh, wanting to get away from the topic uh, than, than just trying to do what's right. And so, you know, I, in, in, you know, in my opinion, believe that it would be best for the community uh, for us to drop it for a while. Uh, we've named it RM one fifty. Uh, that gives us e- exactly what we need. Uh, the street signs themselves are allowed to remain rebel for now. We could change it uh, officially to RM one fifty and I would even expect that there might be a, a possibility of us actually replacing the signs themselves while Rebel Drive addresses continue to be served um, with the postmaster. Uh, and I think that would work just fine. Uh, but I, I haven't gotten any sense uh, that this council is in a position to try to name the road. Uh, and I haven't gotten a sense that the community is necessarily clamoring to try to give it a name either. Uh, I, I've had no less than a hundred different proposals submitted just to me uh, from people wanting to name it all different kinds of things. Uh, I think that creating committee will uh, could invariably lead to uh, to strife uh, within the committee that is created. Uh, and various people thinking that their proposal that they brought forward uh, would, uh, is the appropriate one. You know, the reason for going for Fahita Drive the way that we did, albeit um, a very flawed pursuit uh, was an attempt to bring uh, something that would be accepted by everyone. Uh, and so that we wouldn't have to go through uh, such a painful process. You know, certainly um, uh, open to citizen input on it. It's not what this is about. It's really just for me. Thinking that we landed in a good place and now we're immediately trying to pick up by, we landed in a good place by removing Rebel Drive, which is what, if you think about the actions of the school district, they were, they removed the rebel mascot and gave themselves a year before they had to, you know, pick a new name or pick a new mascot to help, to help separate out some of the angst, anxiety uh, that was wrapped up in the rebel mascot itself. And I wish if I could go back, uh, I wish that I would have taken the, the, the example of the school district and proposed something very similar to uh, the council, but that's not what we did. Uh, I, I wouldn't be able to live with myself if I didn't at least mention that what my true belief is. And that is that we should not create a committee right away and go down this path. But we should rather leave it RM one fifty uh, and pick it up at a future date. So uh, that's my piece to be said on this. If we want to go with and allow folks to apply. I mean, I even said it with very little objection at the last meeting that we're picking a, we're trying to create a committee and letting them name the street. Uh, I just don't really think that also is quite accurate to public input. It, it doesn't, it doesn't sit well with me. Uh, as, as that process would unfold, however good our intentions may be. Uh, I think there's a lot of risk associated with this path. Um, so uh, if I, you know, my, what I was hoping we could do last week uh, was, was the action that we took, the committee piece though. Um, and the, and the, and immediately trying to go and give it a new name. I, I don't think we have that pressure based on postmaster and cost of business and things like that, because I think we can accomplish what we need to on our side without costing anyone anything. Uh, and then allowing for some time to pass before we pick up the subject again. So anyway, I'm probably in the, the far minority on that. I just want to say my piece. Any, any further comments?
Well, I'll, I'll just, I, I certainly respect that and I, I'll, I'll say that for me, my main goal was achieved with the um, last agenda item. Uh, it's not about offense uh, and being offended by anything. It's about living in a community where everybody um, can feel welcome. And not feel like um, perhaps you're, you're not one in that community. So um, um, you know, um, I hope uh, residents do apply and, and, and participate and we um, you know, can move, move forward with something that is inclusive and uh, definitely the community can be proud of.
Any other comments? All those in favor say aye.
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 All opposed? Nay. Motion carries six to one. Uh, that's it for the, that's it for the ex, regular meeting. Uh, we still have quite a bit of executive session. So if y'all want to jump into executive session, now would be the time. Councilmember Sheil.
Mayor, we, we still had an item we're going to address in executive session. Are we going to address that item and come back?
Oh, yes. Uh, Tracy, thank you.
Yes, I was going to, to add, and if I, uh, remind me again, it was item number
Nineteen.
Nineteen. Okay. All right. Okay. So pursuant to chapter five, five, one Texas government code, the city council reserves the right to convene into executive session from time to time to deem, as deemed necessary during this meeting. The city council may convene into executive session pursuant to any lawful exception contained in chapter five, five, one of the Texas government code, including any or all of the following topics. Number one, pending or contemplated litigation or to seek the advice of the city attorney, attorney pursuant to section five, five, one dot zero, seven, one. Rough proportionality determination for paramount section one. And uh, to uh, to the, discuss the meet and confer agreement. And then convene into executive session pursuant to section five, five, one dot zero, eight, seven Texas government code to deliberate regarding the offer of economic incentives to one or more business prospects that the city seeks to have, locate, stay or expand in or near the city. Project Shamrock, Project Cranberry, Project Indigo, one, zero, four, South Burleson.
Second.
Second.
It's been moved by the mayor, seconded by Councilmember Ellison. All those in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. The, there was no action taken during any executive session. There will be no action taken now uh, on the meet and confer agreement. Um, after discussing with legal, we're going to have um, uh, our negotiating team and the law enforcement association. Uh, we're going to have them meet together and discuss and our intention will be to vote on this at the September fifteenth regularly scheduled city council meeting. Uh, so with that, I will make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
It's been moved by the mayor, seconded by Councilmember Sheil. Uh, thank you all, everyone. All those in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.